The following is a production of Cary TV, the town of Cary's government access channel.
I call to order the August 14th meeting of the Cary Town Council. And at this time, I'll recognize Mayor Protem Adcock for our ceremonial opening.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, usually during the ceremonial opening, I try to provide a health tip, being the resident nurse practitioner in the group. And tonight, I want to remind everyone that August is National Immunization Month. Most people think about immunizations for babies and for kids getting ready to start school. But actually, immunizations are needed throughout the lifespan. College kids getting ready to start their first year of college need to get a meningitis shot. Parents-to-be and grandparents-to-be should be immunized against pertussis because it's the only way to protect babies less than six months old against whooping cough. Everybody should get a shingle shot when they're 60. And when they're 65, they should get an pneumonia shot, or if you're diabetic at any age, you should have an pneumonia shot. And of course, everyone over the age of six months should have flu vaccine every year. So the take-home message tonight is to be like your town council. Never miss a shot. Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're now at Agenda Item 1.3, which is the adoption of our agenda. Is there a motion to adopt our agenda?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now move to recognitions, reports, and presentations. That's Agenda Item 2.1. And at this time, I'll recognize our town attorney, Ms. Simpson, for the settlement of Town of Cary versus Leah Rannie.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, council, to resolve the potential appeal of a dangerous dog determination, we were able to enter into a settlement agreement that imposes restrictions on the dog and settles the matter. And copies of the settlement agreement are available from, I believe, the clerk or the town attorney's office, if anyone's interested.
Thank you. That takes us to Public Speaks Out, which is Item 3 on our agenda. There's a one-hour time limit for Public Speaks Out. If you would like to speak at Public Speaks Out, please take a seat in the rows to my right that are shown as reserved. There's a timer on the podium. You have three minutes to speak. When the light on the podium turns from green to yellow, that means you have 30 seconds remaining. And when it turns to a flashing red, your time is up. And I'll have to interrupt you, not trying to be rude, but trying to be fair. And I'll ask you to immediately conclude your comments. Again, there is a one-hour time limit for Public Speaks Out. And I ask all our speakers tonight to adhere to our three-minute guidelines and be fair to all of our speakers. So at this time, I'll open up Public Speaks Out, and I will invite the first speaker forward. Anyone for Public Speaks Out?
Thank you. My name is Steve Barsby. I live at 201 Southwest Street. Cary likes to be recognized as a bicycle-friendly community. And in many ways, the city has done well. You have nice greenways.
I apologize for interrupting, but I'm very curious. If you're speaking on the North Harrison proposal...
Sir, yes.
...that's a public hearing, and you'll get five minutes instead of three. So if you hang on...
I should step down.
We'll do our Public Speaks Out, and I'll call you back. And we'll make sure you get five minutes instead of three.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone for Public Speaks Out?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Jason Barron, here on behalf of Lenar Homes, speaking related to Items 4.2 and 4.3 on your agenda, which are the proposed amendments to the Alston Activity Center Plan. Here to speak in support of those, the town-initiated amendment with respect to the Alston Activity Center. Want to make a couple of points on behalf of my client related to those amendments and what the potential impacts of those amendments are. In their simplest form, those proposed amendments do two things. With respect to TAS 14, they introduce single-family detached and eliminate apartments. And with respect to TAS 15, it guarantees that more than 44 acres of TAS 15 will be developed for non-residential uses. In its simplest form, that's exactly what this amendment does. Nothing more and nothing less. The status quo as of today is that the entirety of Petty Farm, for the most part, could be developed exclusively for residential uses. There is no guarantee for a mixture of uses. It could be developed for a combination of townhomes, apartments, and live-work items. Evans Farms, which is TAS 7, is an example of what could happen to the Petty Farm neighborhood. Evans Farms was originally planned to include a combination of office, commercial, and residential. And what we have today, for a great client and great projects, is just residential. There are townhomes, and there are detached dwellings. For a TAS that was ultimately planned for a mixture of uses. I don't think we want to repeat Evans Farms with that Petty Farm. This amendment will ensure the type of mixed uses that the Alston Center originally sent out to do. It will have a mixture of residential uses in TAS 14. It will guarantee non-residential in TAS 15. From my perspective and from my client's perspective, that's a win-win. So again, at its very essence, this amendment, all it does is replace apartments for detached dwellings, and it guarantees non-residential in TAS 15 for the first time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for Public Speaks Out?
Hello, my name's John Barber, and I live at the intersection of Brook Green and Balmoral, which is an item on your agenda for later this evening. Couple of points on this intersection that I think we need to keep in mind as we discuss this. The line of sight and the right-of-way on this road are not the same thing. Cars coming down Brook Green are coming at a speed which has been clocked anywhere from an average of 30 miles per hour, including cars that are making left-hand turns off of Brook Green onto Balmoral and off of Balmoral onto Brook Green. Cars traveling straight through are going faster on average. What's happening is the line of sight extends up to nine feet beyond the city's right-of-way. Every year and a half to two years, I get city employees coming out to my house telling me I need to clear-cut land beyond the city's right-of-way in order to ensure visibility. What's going on is it is a poorly engineered road, and responsibility for making it safe is being shifted onto a private property owner. Between Plantation Road and Lake Pine, Brook Green is two different roads. Between Balmoral and Lake Pine, you've got a series of S-curves with on-street parking. Two of those S-curves contain or have residents on them who do a lot of on-street parking. They're not doing anything wrong or illegal. They're parking cars. Drivers coming down this road, and I've had police officers tell me the same thing, that when they drive the road without looking at their speedometer, they find themselves going 30 miles an hour. It's a very wide road. It wasn't designed with the line of sight needed to support the speed limit that's in place and the actual flow of traffic on that road. People walking their dogs down Brook Green in the middle of the night, 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock, as I frequently do, have to jump off the road to avoid getting hit, especially at those S-curves. The straight-of-way, which exists from Balmoral up to Plantation, is not a problem. You can see traffic. The greatest obstruction to visibility is on-street parking. I'm not arguing against on-street parking. I'm telling you, this is a problem that we have. The lack of visibility is the primary problem combined with the excess speed. Drivers coming from Lake Pine down to Balmoral will encounter a speed limit sign, a suggestion sign in yellow which says 15 miles per hour. It's a few feet away from a school bus stop at Troon. The next thing they hit is the intersection of Balmoral. Those drivers are going over 30 miles an hour. They're going twice. The recorded speed of these drivers is twice your suggestion sign and 20% higher than the posted speed limit. Coming in the other direction off of Brook Green, or off of Balmoral onto Brook Green, the complaint is that visibility is obstructed by things I have growing in my yard, a lot of palm trees, a lot of vegetation, which is outside the right-of-way. Every two years, for the past 15 years, I've had city employees telling me I need to chop stuff down outside of your right-of-way.
Mr. Barber, I'm so sorry to have to interrupt you, but your time has expired. If you have written comments, we'd love to...
And that's okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for Public Speaks Out? Seeing no one for Public Speaks Out, I'll close Public Speaks Out, and we'll move to the consent agenda, which is Item 4. For the benefit of people watching our meeting on TV, I'm going to take a moment to review our consent agenda items. Please keep in mind that one vote approves all of these items. We have on the consent agenda minutes, rezoning 14 REZ-18, amendments to the Alston Activity Center Concept Plan, comprehensive plan consistency for rezoning 14 REZ-18, amendment to traffic schedule 15, speed limits in school zones, the Bartley Park Phase 1 project. I would like to pull Items 4.2 and 4.3 for the rezoning 14 REZ-18 and the accompanying comprehensive plan of consistency statement for discussion so that we can receive clarifying information from our staff. Would council members like any of the other consent items pulled for discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We are now at public hearings. The same rules that we had for Public Speaks Out apply to public hearings with one exception. You now have five minutes instead of three minutes. Our first public hearing is Item 5.1. It's the consideration of a complete street conversion pilot project for North Harrison Avenue. We're going to hear a report from staff and conduct a public hearing, and council may take action on this item tonight. And after Ms. Cove, I would invite the gentleman that was up here earlier to be our first speaker. Ms. Cove.
Thank you, and good evening, council. Tonight's item is a follow-up to an item presented to you two weeks ago on July 31st regarding the consideration of a change to the look and feel of North Harrison Avenue between Chapel Hill Road and Maynard Road. Just as background, in January of this year, staff presented you with a list of projects to be implemented with the Bicycle Improvement Community Investment Bond project. Among many locations in town, about 20 to 25, North Harrison was included as a location for bicycle facilities. There was no determination about what those specific facilities would be. We have started working on the design of all of those projects in the Community Investment Bond. In the meantime, we got word from NC DOT that they were resurfacing, had plans to resurface four different roadways in Cary. North Harrison is one of those. And staff saw this opportunity to implement one of our projects earlier than we anticipated and at no additional cost to the town. The four primary elements that we are talking with you tonight and getting input from the public are being, they're being proposed. The first is to convert the existing four-lane undivided roadway, two lanes in each direction, into a three-lane roadway and adding a center turn lane, a continuous left turn lane the whole corridor, giving people somewhere to wait when they try to turn left into or out of Harrison Avenue. The second element is to utilize that extra pavement to provide bike lanes in each direction. The third item is to add a crosswalk near Kingswood Drive. And the fourth item is to make some changes at the intersection of Chapel Hill Road and North Harrison, primarily a change in the northbound direction where we would have a left lane, a straight lane, and a right turn lane. And that's different than there is today. And that would help us make those lanes a little bit wider. When you're at that intersection, you feel a little squeezed in currently. So we were proposed to implement a pilot program, evaluate the changes over the next six months, and then finalize the plans for the markings. Here's what it could look like. The picture on the top is the existing, again with two lanes in each direction and no center turning lane. So today, if people want to turn left from North Harrison, they stop in that, in that leftmost inner lane. The bottom is the proposal with the one lane in each direction, a center turn lane, and bike lanes. We have looked at other locations with similar characteristics that have performed well, notably Lake Pine as well as Kildare Farm. Essentially, what we've seen is the amount of cars that can move along a four-lane undivided section is pretty much the same as the amount of cars that can move along a three-lane section with that center turn lane. The volumes on Harrison Avenue are pretty similar to what you're seeing here, and we don't expect this corridor to change much in the future. In fact, we've seen some reductions in the volumes recently. So we're fairly comfortable with the proposal we're presenting to you tonight. The details of the proposed pilot project include increasing those lane lifts, as I mentioned before, at the intersection of Chapel Hill Road and North Harrison. As you can see here, proposing some minor changes to the stopbar locations to make those turning movements a little bit easier. And again, changing that northbound approach from a straight right-turn lane into an exclusive right-turn lane. And all that would require some of the re-timing of the traffic signal. As part of our pilot project, we propose an evaluation where we would survey residents and users on their experiences with the proposed change. We would document bike usage in particular locations along the corridor. And as you might have noted in your staff report, based on some council concerns that we heard two weeks ago, we've changed the way we were going to collect that bike detection. We're going to use some tried-and-true methods that is actually video, where we actually videotape that area and then count the bikes and pedestrians following that videotape. And finally, we observe the operation of the intersection of Chapel Hill and North Harrison. These are the same benefits and impacts that we showed you last time, just for your consideration. I would add that on the delay slide, that the one on the top right, excuse me, as I mentioned, we're comfortable with what we've seen in other locations, but we are going to continue to watch the operation of the intersection during the pilot. And the access one on the bottom right has a question mark. We've heard feedback from people through email that some people think that having a center turn lane would actually help them, and some people thought that it would be harder to do that. So that's why it's not really shown as a positive or a negative. So it's based on people's perceptions. We're asking for the public's input tonight. We did post a public hearing notice online. We posted signs along the corridor, and we did direct mailings to 254 households. Staff has received a few emails and calls on the topic, in addition to the comments that you heard from a speaker at the last public meeting. Council, I'm sure, has received some emails as well. This is just a general summary of what we heard. There were some concerns about the negative impact to the vehicle traffic in exchange from the, for the bikes. There was concerns with turning left out of Kingswood Drive with the changes. One person that rode to us saw an improvement with the center left-turn lane. And one person commented that the road would have a more pleasant feel, and the traffic would be more predictable and fluid if you got the turning movement out of those three So staff's recommendation pending the public comments at the hearing is to implement the complete streets pilot project, to evaluate that project, and based on that evaluation, implement final markings with our Community Investment Bond project. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you for the public hearing, and I'd be happy to answer questions after that.
Very good. This time, I'll open the public hearing and invite our first speaker back down to begin Again, I apologize. You have five minutes.
Thank you very much. You folks are more than kind. Again, my name is Steve Barsby. I live on Southwest Street. I'm a regular bicycle commuter. I'm retired, but that doesn't mean I don't commute places on my bicycle. I use my bicycle to go every place I can, and that's defined as a one-way trip of 20 miles or less. I regularly ride to North Raleigh. I regularly ride to Durham. I ride loops in Cary. And Cary, in some ways, is a bicycle-friendly place because we have greenways, we have marked bicycle loops where people can ride. But in general, those places don't help cyclists go places. I used to ride Chapel Hill Boulevard to Durham. I can't do that anymore because there's no bicycle accessibility on Chapel Hill Boulevard heading west. I ride down Old Apex Road, and Apex Road has had a number of changes made to it, but it hasn't included any changes for adding a foot or two for cyclists to ride on the right. I'm not afraid to ride with traffic. I do it all the time, being that we live here. But that stretch on North Harrison, heading up towards Maynard, is about the most dangerous place that I encounter. I will not ride my bike without my gloves for better control, without my helmet to protect my head should I fall, and without a rearview mirror that helps me see cars coming behind me. Drivers very often don't recognize that cyclists belong on roads. I get yelled at. Get on the sidewalk. Get off the road. But cyclists are a vehicle, and we go places, and we contribute a lot to economies where we live. And that Harrison street heading north is a very important connector for cyclists heading many to work and up to Sted. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Next speaker for this public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, council members. I am here tonight with my wife and some neighbors...
Could you give us your name, please?
...to express my total, absolute total opposition...
Excuse me, sir. Could I get your name, please?
I'm sorry. My name is Ronald J. Frame.
Thank you.
I lived on 809 Kingswood Drive for over 40 years. So I've seen a lot of changes, especially to North Harrison Avenue over the years. I used that road for 40 years to drive to work, as many people do from all over Cary. And over the 40 years, there's been all kinds of developments that feed from Maynard Road, Cary Parkway, SASS, West Don. So it's a very, very busy road. And in my mind, in no way can I imagine a three-lane road instead of a four-lane road. Sometimes I think we need a five-lane road. On many days when I try to turn left from Kingswood Drive onto North Harrison Avenue, I'll have three or four cars stacked behind me because it's pretty hard to get out and turn left, particularly when people are coming home from work, they're busy, they're going to lunch, whatever. But as you know, from official town numbers, it's a very heavily, heavily traveled road. I heard a previous speaker make mention of the fact that this road would be paid for somewhat by other-than-Cary funds. However, no matter where the money comes from, it's still money. It's money that we all end up paying one way or the other, whether it's in our federal taxes, state taxes, whatever. There's nothing for free, nothing at all. But I'm not here basically to argue price. I'm here to talk about the practicality of North Harrison Avenue. Imagine if the speed limit was 35 miles an hour instead of 45. Why, we'd have a pileup that I maintain would be almost impossible to navigate. I really don't think it's a wise business decision, or the best use of our tax dollars, again, no matter where those dollars come from, to satisfy just a very few people, they call themselves bicyclers, but just a few people, compare that to everyone else, satisfy their wants and needs. We all have wants and needs. I sure have plenty of them, just can't afford many of them. I think that any, and I'd like to recommend that any decisions made by our mayor and town council be focused on the vast majority of our citizens. Did I see a number like 150,000 earlier in a day? Count that, count and compare that with the number of bicycle people. I have nothing against bicycle people, but I know what it is to have to get to work and get to work on time. I'm retired now, don't have to do it anymore, but I used to, drive out every day to the Also, one item, when you think about our roads, how do we pay for our roads? How do we even have roads? I think that some of the funds include, but are not limited to, property tax, vehicle property taxes, registration fees, inspection fees, gasoline taxes. Without those, we wouldn't have any roads for anybody, even to drive cars on. Now, what do the cyclists...
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but time is...
At my timer?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for allowing me to speak, and city council members, thank you very much for hearing what I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hi there. My name is David Strauss, and I live at 810 North Harrison, within the range of this proposal. And I'd like to speak in support of the proposal, and there are two reasons I'd like to do so. One is because the addition of a turn lane seems to me a very good idea. Most of our driveways on that, my neighbors and certainly my driveway, requires almost a complete stop in order to make the turn into my driveway. With a speed limit of 45 miles an hour, that means a lot of people are going 50. And for us to come to a complete stop and make the turn is scary at times. So for that reason, I think having an actual turn lane that allows us to make that safely is a good idea. The other reason is because dropping the speed from 45 to 35 makes it more of a neighborhood. Right now, it's a pass-through. It's a place to go from one place to the other. I understand we need that, but if we can do, move the same number of cars with a lower speed limit and make our neighborhood a little bit more livable for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Tom Staley. My family moved to Cary when there were 7,000 people. We own the corner of Chapel Hill Road and Harrison. We've seen many accidents in that area, and certainly, street improvements need to be done. I'm not opposed to the three lanes as proposed, nor am I opposed to a bicycle lane. I'm more concerned about the turning of the head for drainage for that road, Harrison. There's only a 12-inch culvert that catches all the rain. If you look at the photograph above you, you'll notice that the filling station, when it was originally, excuse me, when it was originally built, there is a culvert just to the left of Harrison, but the city council or the improvements were made to slope all of the filling station to a drain. Then they put the drain underneath Chapel Hill Road and let it flow onto our property, which has split my property in half. It goes down behind my property and goes back into a city culvert just at the end of my property on Harrison, which is only a 12-inch main to receive the water, the floodwaters. My question is, will there be any consideration to new drainage for that area? There used to be a town employee who owned the house right next to us who had a swimming pool. And more than I can count, every time there was a heavy rain, his pool would be flooded. He moved, and I think they filled the pool. My concern about the road is, will you be widening the road or using the existing dimensions that exist as they stand? If you widen the road, I think I'm probably 12 feet to my front porch on the rental unit that I have on Harrison. There was talk at one time about actually putting a sidewalk through there as indicated, well, I guess it's curb. But if you extend it any wider than it is, then you'll be infringing on where I'll actually have to probably bulldoze the duplex there because there won't be any room. I didn't understand the turn lane as it was proposed, coming off of, if I heard it right, coming off of Chapel Hill onto Harrison to talk, was there a lane to turn into there? There's a lot of, I have a driveway there that, on a daily basis, is an accident waiting to happen, and we've actually had accidents that's been reported to the police department coming out of that driveway because the turn is so quick that if it's a green light and somebody's coming down Chapel Hill Road and want to make a right-hand turn onto Harrison, by the time they start the turn and they look, if somebody's backing out of the driveway, they're hit. So I'm not against the proposal, but I'm hoping that the city council will look into the drainage for that corner or additional drainage for Harrison because it's just too small. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Trish Yovanovich. I live at 805 North Harrison Avenue. I don't see how changing a four-lane road into a two-lane road is going to be beneficial to anybody. It's hard enough to get out of my, my driveway is off of Ashley, and when you have to turn left onto Harrison, if it's rush hour, forget it. You might as well just turn right because you're not going to get out. So it's going to back up traffic. I was reading about the railroad bridge they want to put over the railroad because traffic backs up so bad when the trains come through. And I'm like, well, if you think it's bad now, reduce those lanes to two lanes. It's ridiculous. I'm almost embarrassed that people thought of this idea. It's just ridiculous, and I hope that you will vote it down.
Thank you.
Duty Mayor and Members of Council, my name is Brent Miller. I'm a citizen of Cary, and my vaccinations are up to date. And I get a flu shot every week, every year, excuse me, every year. I live about a half a mile, a mile and a half from this area and traverse it very often. I am in favor of complete streets. I favor multimodal transportation, and I favor cars and bikes sharing the road. But I'm not in favor of this proposal as it exists today for one of Cary's most busiest major thoroughfares because I don't think it actually achieves the complete street concept. This is an eight-tenths of a mile stretch of one of our busiest thoroughfares. The idea is to remove one car lane to accommodate bicycles. The staff report says that survey results indicated that 70, about 70% of the respondents favored this proposal of adding a bike lanes. But when I saw that, I wondered if the consequences that went with that, namely, removing a car lane of travel and reducing the speed limit to 35 miles per hour, were made clear in the survey. And so two days ago, I emailed Mr. Delk to ask for a copy of the survey, and I didn't get a response. But then I read in the newspaper that Mr. France stated that the survey contained a fatal flaw because it did not make those consequences clear. And I did some checking around and found out that Mr. France is a usually reliable source. So I do think that the survey may not be a good rationale for this, and it might need to be looked at again. The second rationale is that this would be free, as a previous speaker stated, because DOT is already repaving the area, and we can pretty much paint any kind of lanes we want on there at the time. But if this experiment fails at the end of the six months, then we have to restripe it, and it will cost us at that point. And I also agree with the previous speaker. I just don't quite get this idea of removing capacity of our existing infrastructure to achieve a goal. There are other ways to achieve the goals. In this case being, we need to accommodate bicycles in that area. But we have these road diets, as they're called. There was one proposed on Walnut Street. I'm glad that was turned down, and we heard about a couple more. And I just don't understand removing capacity from existing infrastructure. We want people to conserve water, but I don't think we're going to close down one of our water treatment plans to do that, and this seems similar at its core. So as I said, I support complete streets. I support multimodal transportation. I support bicycles and cars sharing the road. I think there's a good idea behind this proposal, but I think it's a rather poor execution. Again, it's an eight-tenths of a mile stretch that isn't really going to help car traffic at all, and it's only going to help bicyclists on that stretch. There's still the rest of Harrison Avenue to traverse. And I don't think most Cary citizens would want this if it were explained clearly. So I hope you'll deny this proposal and continue to look for better ways to accommodate cyclists and cars, and truly build complete streets that work, because I think this one would be an incomplete street if it were done. Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, please don't applaud. This is a business meeting. We'd appreciate it. Next speaker, please. Anyone else for the public hearing?
Is it open?
It's still open.
I haven't registered beforehand, if that's necessary.
Thank you very much. My name is Scott Mace. I live at 211 Southwest Street in Cary. And I'll be very brief. I'm totally in favor of this for safety reasons primarily. That is an extremely narrow stretch of Harrison, impossible to ride a bicycle on it without taking serious risks. And I believe that that stretch also being less than a mile long has reduced traffic flow. I think a lot of people turn at Maynard. And I've driven it, and there's going to be times when there's heavy traffic, but primarily, I think that there's nothing but good things that can be gained by this change, and I hope that you'll continue forward with it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Pat Walker. I live at 808 Kingswood Drive. I haven't studied this proposal too much, but the thoughts of dropping down to two-lane does bother me because it is difficult to get out on Kingswood Drive. I do have a bike. I ride on the greenways because I hate riding on the roads. I like to relax when I go for a ride, and you won't catch me riding on Kingswood, I mean Harrison the way it is right now. My biggest concern, if you go this route and knock it down to two lanes with bicycle trails, is getting out on Kingswood Drive onto North Harrison. My thought would be put a stoplight at Kingswood. I see, I'm glad to see you go crosswalk there because the sidewalk from the other side is very dangerous for our new sidewalk they just recently put in to cross that road four lanes to get to the other sidewalk on the west side of North Harrison. So I'm glad you're putting a crosswalk up there for pedestrians, but a stoplight would do wonders for me. I could probably live with it with a stoplight, I believe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Teresa Moore. I live on West Street, and I cycle and drive on Harrison. I commute to work probably about half the time, and Harrison is my route. The other half the time, that has me driving, so I have, you know, I'm considering the driving portion of it as well. But given that, I was excited when I heard the proposal. I thought it was well-thought-out. The advantage to me is having not necessarily an independent bike lane, but maybe even just a wider single lane, not necessarily that it needed to be striped. The biggest advantage I saw, and I get a close-up view of the road biking to and from work. Harrison, I notice, from Maynard South, it doesn't have as much traffic. When I'm biking, I see that very well. Cars turn off typically before they cross Maynard. The traffic is definitely lighter south of Maynard. Also, it's more residential. There are many more driveways, side streets for cars to turn, and having that center turn lane, I think is, when I'm driving, and I'm not saying this just as a cyclist, but when I'm driving on Harrison, it's often stopping for a left turn. And I think, you know, the beauty of this proposal is that, you know, it will have a center turn lane. And I understand that it's a proposal. It's a trial. And, you know, I'd be the first to come back in whatever that time period is, you know, once it's complete, and for me to say, you know, guys, I love to bike, but I don't think this is working. But, you know, given the opportunity that we have now, I think it's a great, great chance. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ed Kethren. I live at 807 Walnut Drive. Couple of things on this. Number one, it's just inconceivable to me that we would inconvenience 15,000 people a day in order to give some minor relief, and that's all it would be, eighth of a mile, to the people who want to bicycle. And I just, I cannot believe that you can reduce the speed by 20% and reduce the traffic lanes by 25% and still handle the same amount of traffic. I just, I cannot imagine that happening, and I don't think anybody else can. I was at a meeting with a group of my neighbors on last week, and none of them had heard about this. And I got the letters, the only reason I knew about it. But the unanimous, there was probably a half a dozen families there, and it was unanimous, everybody said, they can't be serious. And I couldn't believe we were either. But I see no advantage to this, and I just see a lot of problems because we, all of us have been here a while, we remember what it was like when the rest of North Harrison was not four-laned. And now we're talking about, well, we got four lanes, but we want to squeeze them down to three. I don't see it being any advantage to anybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else for this public hearing? Anyone at all? I'll close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions or comments.
I have a number of questions. Could you address, I have a list. Could you address how staff came up with this? What was the impetus, besides the fact that there's, you know, money available? What is the impetus for moving for a road diet? Can you give us a little bit more detail, like you had on the benefits chart?
Sure.
What made you look at, want to look at that?
It definitely was, excuse me. Again, with the community investment bond, we had looked at needing some bike facilities in this area, and that was primarily, we were looking at sharos, not really looking at changing the striping. But when this opportunity for DOT actually resurfacing the road, we just kind of wanted to take a look at all the options. And so this would not actually physically change any curb lines out there, so this is just within the existing roadway and the existing curbs. And we wanted to see what we could do to get traffic out of that through lane. The left turn lane is usually the fast lane, and a lot of people stop in that fast lane to turn left currently. So we were worried about some of those safety implications, also trying to get some bike facilities in there, and trying to make that street a little bit more residential in feel. There are about over 50 driveways along that quarter, including the streets, so there are a lot of turns and residences in that quarter.
And was the speed, may I? You have a couple more?
Please.
Thank you. Was the speed limit part of, speed limit change part of that discussion, or is that part of a road diet template? Or where did that come from?
The speed limit change actually was discussed primarily as part of sharos. Typically, you don't install sharos on roads higher than 35 miles per hour. So that's what we were looking at for that, and we do think it would work in the complete street conversion pilot project as well.
So if this complete street didn't go through, is there any other impetus to change the speed limit? Is that a separate discussion? Is that something you're thinking about anyway, based on safety concerns or?
We are considering it if we would put sharos on those roadways, so that would come back to council as a, with a speed limit change.
Okay. I'm done for now.
I have a question. We talked about, or I heard about, volume. I didn't hear anything about queuing, and that's my biggest concern. Today, queuing going south at the evening rush hour backs up at least a block, and I drop it almost every day. And so that would tell me that it would at least back up two blocks, which creates all kinds of hazards and danger. Then coming from the other way, when you have a train, the queuing is enormous and going down the one lane. I was wondering if there are any studies done on queuing or any simulations done with the queuing, or has it all been volume?
We've actually...
We've actually looked at the operations of that specific intersection with level of service, and we don't see any negative repercussions of the changes. I do agree with you that the line of cars will be longer at the signal, but the actual signal timing is what controls that more than the number of lanes. So right now, if you have to wait through two signals, you'll probably still have to wait through two signals, and you just may be further back in the line.
So the signal timing would change at the light, and so Chapel Hill Road would have less green?
No, we're not proposing to change the signal timing. So with the same signal timing, you would just, you would still have to wait through probably two cycles. You'd just be, instead of being five cars back, you may be 10 cars back, because you're all in one lane.
That really doesn't make sense to me. It seemed like you'd move twice as many cars through a green than you would with one lane. But, okay.
I think, sorry. The, my point is that not everybody gets through on the first signal.
I agree.
So, we wish everybody could get through on the first green, but they don't. So most people would have to sit through two cycles now, and they'll have to sit through two cycles in the future.
Okay. Other questions? Anyone else?
Well, are you able to address Mr. Staley's drainage questions at this point? Would that be putting you on the spot?
We'd definitely be able to follow up with him. The current proposal is not to change, again, any of the curbs, so no drainage would be changed. But we have some other programs in town that we can work with him on. So staff will get us contact information and talk to him.
Excellent.
And there was a question about widening. Of course, we're not widening.
We are not.
Just to make that clear. Other questions?
One of the advantages of making this change that has been cited is that crosswalk at Kingswood Boulevard, or Kingswood, is it Drive?
Drive, yes, ma'am.
Drive, excuse me. Are there other opportunities or other devices that could be used to help people cross there safe, safely, if this was to keep its cross-section as it is? Like, could we put flashers on the road when pedestrians are present and press a button? Like, is there anything like that that we could do? Or those little rumble strips as they approach Kingswood Drive to slow people down?
There's definitely some other things we can look at. We need to keep in mind that this is a DOT facility, so they would have the ultimate authority in either case of what options we looked at. The challenge with the current setup with the four lanes is pedestrian has to clear all four of those lanes. And that's why staff is more comfortable putting in a crosswalk with the three-lane section, so there's a slight refuge area for people to wait.
Other questions?
Just, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to follow up on Ms. Robinson's questions about the crosswalk. The crosswalk is actually a concern of mine. It's at the bottom of the hill, both directions. You know, even if the speed limit was 35, cars coming down that hill, unless you're riding the brakes, you're going 45, 50 by the time you get to the bottom. The town has historically not placed crosswalks in areas that don't have stop signs and/or signals, because cars are not looking to stop for pedestrians in the middle of a road. So that is a concern of mine. Whether we did this modification or not, I don't know that I'm supportive of the crosswalk at all, unless there was some other ways to alert folks that, hey, somebody's crossing the road. I didn't even realize we were doing it with Walnut Street. I thought we, you know, voted to repave as-is, and then crosswalk showed up. But one of the arguments, we'd talked about a crosswalk years ago on Cary Parkway over by North Cary Park and such, and one of the arguments there for not doing it was there's no stoplight or stop sign there. And so I'm kind of wondering, it just doesn't make a lot of sense to me. I wholeheartedly agree that there needs to be a safer way for folks to get across the street into the sidewalk. But I also agree with Mr. Miller's comments that it's not really a complete street proposal, because we're not getting the sidewalk on the other side of the street. To me, I think we have more of a demand for pedestrian traffic along the side of the road than we do for bicycle traffic up and down the road. But I also understand the constraints of the road and the topography issues on that east side, slopes, homes very close to the road and such. And I just, I feel like as much as we'd like to include bicycle facilities along this road, I think we're just, we're trying to fit 20 pounds of stuff in a 10-pound bag, you know? And that troubles me. I really do want to thank staff for all your efforts on this. I mean, you guys are doing exactly what we want you to do, try to take advantage of all these opportunities that arise. You saw an opening with a, you know, DOT looking to repave the road. Is this an opportunity we can take advantage of? I think we're all so very appreciative of that. But at the end, I think for me, it just doesn't work on this particular street. I really thank Ms. Adcock for calling for a public hearing on this one, so we could get the citizen feedback and really get a sense or a flavor of what the community was thinking. And I think we all heard from those that, you know, both in favor and opposed, but feedback I got was probably 25% in favor, 75% opposed. I agree with the comments another speaker made, you know, this road handles 15,000 cars a day, you know? So we're looking at taking away two lanes for 15,000 cars to provide bicycle lanes for maybe 50 bikes a day. I mean, I don't know what the number would be, 50, 100 bikes a day? I don't know what that number is, but it just doesn't seem to make the most sense to me. But, so, that's kind of where I'm at on it. As much as I appreciate the effort, and as much as I think we all support bicycle facilities with any new road construction projects, I just don't think it really works here. So that's kind of where I'm at.
I have one more question. The examples that you gave us for complete streets, some of the ones that we've done before, the Lake Pine and Killarri Farm, although they're similar, there's some key differences between this one, right? The, not as many drive, I think you said 50 driveways?
Over 50 driveways on this quarter.
You know, not a train, right? It's not a major connector. Do you have any evidence, or could you give us any feedback on, since those road diets, have we, have we seen, are there less accidents? Can you give us some evidence as to why this might be a good idea?
I can give you an interesting thing that I've thought of, is on Lake Pine, we did pretty much the exact same thing. We went from four lanes to three with a bike lane, and we have not received any feedback from that. So I thought that was very interesting, whether that's positive or negative, but we didn't hear anything from anyone in that case.
It's hard to read nothing.
Yeah, Killarri is a little bit different, because we actually didn't implement bike lanes there. Those are sharos in that location. And we've received some positive response to this.
Right, okay.
But you're right, there's not as many driveways on those quarters as this.
And those are like a 10,000?
12, 10, 12.
10 to 12, and this is 15,000?
Well, it was, you're correct. It was 15,000 when we reported at the last meeting. DOT's 2013 counts showed it going down to 13,000.
Oh, so it is about the same, then? Okay.
Other questions?
Just wanted to follow up on the comments that Mr. France made. I, you know, with every decision to change something, we struggle with, how much will it make it better, and how much will it make it worse? And as, and I agree with you about the percentage of those pro and con. I would say my mail ran pretty much 75 against, and some, some really thoughtful arguments about it. And, and so were the, you know, the 25% for it were thoughtful as well. But as I look at where the greater good is, I don't think this is it. And I agree that it's your job to bring us new ideas and for us to weigh those. And I think you did, you did exactly what you were to do. I think Mr. Miller kind of nailed it when he called it the incomplete street, because it's point, you know, .8 miles. And I think about the other two ends of Harrison, and, you know, how does it, how much impact does it really have? So when you guys get ready to...
Please, go ahead.
Okay. Make sure I can find it. I move that we do not approve the Complete Street Conversion Pilot Project for North Harrison Avenue.
There's a motion and a second discussion.
And I would just like to speak to my motion, if I might, Mayor. And that is to say, it's in no way to say that there are not some merits to this proposal, and that we don't appreciate the fact that the staff tried to take advantage of being able to add on to what DOT is doing. I just want to make sure that's clear.
Very good.
Yeah, on the other side of things, I absolutely appreciate the discussion. That's why I like to sit at this table, to hear everyone's point of view before I make a decision. But I think there's, there's value to your point, and Mr. Miller's point, of course, of this being an incomplete street. But I'm also the kind of person that says, you have to start a thing. And I think as, as a bike-friendly community, I would have liked to take in the opportunity to take our, what we've done in the past with the complete streets, and granted, they're not all complete streets, but take our evidence of safety, of people interested in more biking, and, and also, this is one of the entrances to downtown. I'd like to see more people take the opportunity to ride their bike more safely. And, and as you all know, I am a cyclist, so I'd like to, to cycle on this part of the road and stretch of the road as well. The thing that I liked about this was, it was an opportunity to try something without doing too much, you know, quote-unquote, damage. And if it didn't work, we could repay, we could re-stripe it, which is, I never got a chance to ask that question, but what would it cost to re-stripe it? But it would be negligible, I think, compared to some of the other things that we've tried and had to go back. And so I think it would have been an opportunity, you know, we don't often do have pilots in public sector, you know, to actually try something. We do them all the time in the private sector, but I don't see them often in the public sector. And this would have been a great opportunity, as I can feel the weight of the room shifting, to try something without doing too much damage. I especially liked the idea of having a turn lane. I have almost hit a car or two coming down Harrison, or been hit, going 45, trying to make a left or right turn, and somebody's not paying attention, or they're texting or whatever, as they come down, and I hear screeching, because I'm getting ready to make a turn. And I really like the idea of a turn lane, you know, center turn lane. So I do appreciate, I echo, I'm sure, everyone on council. I, I like the idea that you guys keep bringing us stuff to consider.
Yes.
Well, I'm kind of enthusiastic about our staff looking at alternatives to get this roads, the speed limit slowed down. I think that's probably one of the more critical things here, and I'm glad that you brought this item forward. One thing I don't like when we change lanes, like the configuration of lanes, is that we have to send a machine down where the lane, where the lanes are painted on, and kind of scrape off the little bit top of the asphalt, and then we paint the new lanes. But then forevermore, this newly paved road has this ridge in it. And it's just, it's one of those things that just looks awful. So to me, changing it after six months wasn't a freebie, because the cost of that is having that scraped up asphalt.
Why didn't it say it was free?
Yeah, well, you know what I'm saying? But I mean, inexpensive. The cost is not only in dollars, but also in the quality of that road going forward. I agree with the citizens who say, why would we take away capacity if we know in, you know, eight years or 10 years, we'd have to be putting that capacity back in there? It just, it doesn't seem like a worthwhile endeavor.
Ms. Yerhaughn.
We indeed have received a lot of thoughtful comment on both sides of this issue. I mean, I'd get one email, and I'd go, gee, they're right, you know? And then an hour later, I'd get an email on the other, say, boy, they're right, you know? It became very, very difficult. And tonight, we had, by my unofficial count, four speakers, four or five against. I think most of our emails have tended toward the against. But it's one of these things that you can go back and forth on. I certainly cannot agree with the strongest of the opposition comments. I really don't think this is going to be a disaster for Cary. Someone said to me, it wasn't an email, this is the worst decision I've heard of since New Coke. Remember that?
Wow!
2005, remember that? I don't think that's true, because I think the project has merit. I think it really does. However, I'm not 100% sure that it's going to do what we think it's going to do. In fact, I'm not even 90% sure that it's going to do what it's going to do. And usually in those cases, like the Walnut Street case a few months ago, I come down on the side of the status quo then, when I can't decide one way or the other, when we have a significant change. But in this case, since we have as part of the recommendation that this is a trial period, and we can undo the disaster, if you will, I'm going to support the recommendation. I don't know, six to eight months? That may be what you've figured would be, would be needed for this. I would certainly hope that if, if this does pass, and I don't know if it will here, but if it does, that, and we turn, turns out that it's clearly something that's, that's not a good idea, that it could be terminated even three and four months instead of six or eight, I would hope that would be possible. I don't expect that to be the case, but I would hope we would be, be monitoring it very closely from the beginning. I respect our staff's opinion. I respect everybody's opinion who spoke tonight, but our staff has a professional opinion. They said they're comfortable with this, and I'm going to go with it. If it doesn't pass tonight, I sure hope we can look at some other alternatives and look at them quickly to make it a little safer for cyclists on that stretch of the road. Something really needs to be done.
Okay. Anything else?
I would just add, my concern with the pilot part of it is, I don't know if I've ever seen a pilot that once it's been done, I've seen it undone. So, and again, I just, you know, 15,000 cars a day versus 50 to 100 cyclists, I just, I don't see how removing the capacity makes it better on this particular road. I will concede that it's worked well on some other roads, but, and I also would expect the traffic counts here to go up annually as, you know, our efforts and improvements continue in downtown, and we get more residents and more development, and more folks coming to our downtown, so.
That's, that's my point. I think that, I think we're being very conservative on the future capacity. I think it's going to happen a lot quicker. Ed, I've read the same emails. I said, you're right, you're wrong. Went through that like that, but I'm just concerned about the capacity, and I don't think this is the place to try this kind of.
Okay. We have a motion to deny the pilot project recommendation for North Harrison Avenue. And I'll call the question now. All in favor of that motion, please say aye and show your hand.
Aye.
Aye, does oppose.
No.
Motion carries five to two. Thank you, Ms. Scott.
Thank you. We'll be back.
Take your time.
Tough night.
We're now going to move on to Land Development Ordinance text amendments. 6.1 on your agenda. Staff requests to postpone Item B rezoning procedures to the September 11 council meeting, and Ms. Spearman will present this item. Council may take action this evening. Ms. Spearman.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. These are the round 28 LDO amendments, or portion. There were eight total amendments presented for public hearing on May 22. As the mayor mentioned, Item B will be presented to you at a later date. And also, I'll point out, Item G connectivity was pulled from this round. That is an issue that we, the staff is continuing to work on, and that will be brought to you in the near future. To date, as I mentioned, the public hearing was held on May 22. Planning and zoning board work session was held on June 30, and the planning and zoning board made its recommendation on July 17. And then the, the six items that are remaining on the agenda are before you tonight for a potential decision. The background information for all these items is in your text. I'll just go over two items in particular, since there are some options for you to consider. As far as the remaining items, all staff will be available if you have any questions on those items. The first item where we do have an option for you to take into account is Item A, food trucks. The original, there are three items related to food trucks where we had some options. The first was the separation from, between, between individual food trucks. The original proposal provided for a separation of 100 feet between all food trucks. We do have an option for you to consider to not subject the separation requirement to food trucks that are located on the same parcel. So there could be a maximum of three food trucks on one parcel, if that's your wish. That was an item that came up at the public hearing. An item that came up at the planning and zoning board discussion related to the seating. The initial proposal did not provide for any seating with food trucks, and we did add an option to allow portable seating, and that could be provided by the food truck operator or by the property owner. And also, a third item that was raised was related to construction sites. The original proposal allowed, or did not allow any food trucks on residentially zoned property. So there was some discussion that came up related to construction sites in the event that there was a construction site on residentially zoned property. So we did propose an option to allow food trucks with construction sites, not require the permit for those, as they would be just for the employees on the site and the location within. within, within the site would likely change as the construction status on different parts of the parcel changed. The second item where we have some options for consideration is related to the slab-on-grade construction. There were four total options related to the parjing issue that received quite a bit of discussion. The staff recommendation is Option 1, which would basic, which would be no parjing on any side of the residential building or single-family home. The planning and zoning board recommended Option 3A, which would allow parjing on the rear side only with shrubs required. Staff would like to make a comment here that if you're inclined to look at the planning and zoning board option, that we, the staff would recommend Option 3B over Option 3A, and not require the shrubs if the parjing is only allowed on the rear. And this is related to, we feel like on the rear side of the building, there's less visibility. There's also a greater chance for doors, decks, patios, and those types of features that would interfere with or cause challenges for where the shrubs would be placed, and then all of this translates into implementation challenges. So staff recommends approval of the items listed here with the alternatives as listed. And also, I would like to point out, as is the case with all ordinance amendments, there is a cumulative impact on staff and other resources related to the ordinance amendments that we bring for you, particularly with review of plans and permitting and enforcement, and just the cumulative effects that come as we implement new regulations and programs. And with that, I would call on Al Swanstrom to present some more comments on the planning and zoning board's recommendation.
Could you bring us back to Slide 27?
I'm trying to look at my notes.
Oh, that was simple. We had some fairly lengthy conversations. It's interesting how much you can get into food trucks when you really start thinking about it. First, the option that we recommended, 1B, really reflected the fact that, you know, you might have a business that would want to have multiple food trucks, you know, one doing desserts, one doing something else. In fact, I know, I live in Lockmere, we had several food trucks come down to our recreation center parking lot for an event, and it worked out just great. So we think the 100-foot separation would be onerous, and so we recommend that you low up to three. On the Option 2A, we thought it was reasonable to provide a place for people to sit. We don't want them having, you know, a forest of picnic tables out there, but some portable seating. I know, I have a hard time eating standing up these days, and I think the customers would appreciate it. And then on Option 3, it just made sense to us. If you can allow food trucks, one of the services they provide is food delivered to work sites, and, you know, in Cary, a lot of our work sites are residential construction, so we really thought that that made sense. And so, by the way, we did vote unanimously in support of the options as you see here. Okay? And now, we're going to go to 28. Just 28, Nettor? Worked. Parjing was another topic that we had some fairly lengthy conversation on. We had, we started off, I'll tell you, with a bias that says, no parjing, no parjing, no parjing. And finally, we evolved to a position that said, you know, if you can't see it from the street, that is probably the homeowner's problem, not an aesthetic problem. And so our recommendation was to allow parjing on the rear with shrubs, covering the parjing. I don't know that we were absolutely heart over that we had to have shrubs, and I appreciate the staff suggestion that maybe if the homeowner doesn't want shrubs, and nobody else could see it, maybe that would be okay, but the vote we did was to recommend for Option 3A. And I think that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Swanstrom.
Before you go, may I ask a question?
What?
Before you go, well, I think you can answer.
I thought we were going to go over these and get to questions. I want to knock some of these out that are consensus.
I don't blame you.
Yes, please.
That's probably a good idea.
Are you?
That concludes the staff's comments.
So my summary, from what I know, is food trucks, slab-on-grade, need option choices. And from what I've heard from council members in my individual conversations, I believe technical and minor amendments, you want that one for discussion as well. Then I would recommend that we go ahead and make a motion on D, E, and F, and then we can tackle the others one at a time. If that's agreeable to council members, I would entertain a motion to do exactly that.
Let me find the, move adoption of land development ordinance text amendments, D, E, and F.
Okay.
A second.
There's a motion and a second discussion about those three. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So let's go ahead and tackle food trucks. There are three options to consider. Questions about food trucks? Okay?
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Swanstrom, how did planning and zoning define portable for this seating? Because I'm thinking, you know, where I come from, a picnic table's portable. Your two big cousins just get up and pick up each end and take it over to the side of the road. And that's not my idea of what I'd want to see.
Well, I think the net of that is, the, these two food trucks by law need to go back to a central dispensary, and the assumption is, they would take their seating with them when they went back to their central dispensary each night, and then bring it back with them the next day.
So the assumption is, it has to be something that's readily, easily picked up and put in the back of the food truck?
Yes.
That pretty much?
Yes.
Okay. I still don't like the idea of portable seating, but...
I wanted to follow up on Ms. Adcock's. To me, if we start allowing food trucks to put out tables and chairs, you just created a restaurant. And I think that's one thing we're trying to avoid, is these things competing with brick-and-mortar restaurants. You know, to me, food trucks are more like the, you know, special events and stuff, of course, but, you know, construction sites, and guys walk up, get their food, and they eat their food while they're walking, they go sit on a five-gallon bucket, on a wall, whatever. I don't know that, I think you're opening up a can of worms by letting them put up temporary seating and/or tables, so. Regarding the 100-foot separation, totally agree. I don't think that makes sense. And then allowing them on all construction sites, I think, makes total sense. I think where I just disagree is on seating. I would prefer not to allow it.
So while we're on food trucks, and while you're standing there, Ms. Swanstrom, was it Slide 27 or 28 for food trucks?
It was 27 for food trucks.
Could you bring that one up, and we'll tackle these options one at a time? I would entertain a motion for separation from other food trucks.
Make a motion to approve Option 1B.
Second.
Motion and second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seating.
Make a motion to approve Option 2B.
Second.
There's a motion, second discussion. Ms. Yerhaughn.
This first came to us back when we had our planning and development meetings, if you remember.
Oh, my gosh.
End of 2013, and it was Ms. Adcock, Mr. France, and myself, and I was outvoted 2 to 1 at that time. I was in favor of the seating, and I'm glad to see somebody else is. I just don't see what all the opposition is. If it's stuff you can pick up and take away with you, we have so many other regulations, hours and all these things going on, we're not creating a restaurant. I think we're protected by all the other parts, things that we're not discussing tonight on the food trucks that we've discussed before. I just don't see seating as a, as a problem. I mean, it wouldn't be a bad idea to sit down, you know, when, at some of, so I just don't, I don't conceive of the, you know, I can't grasp the opposition to it.
Yeah, I agree, I agree with Ed. I can't stand eating food standing up. Dinner parties, I hate that. I think that it'd be good for us to either approve the other two aspects of the food trucks, and then come back later, and then phase in the seating, or put some kind of limit on how many seats they can bring in. I mean, I don't want them bringing in 20 seats, but if they're bringing in six chairs and three little tables, you know, cafe tables, I don't think that's a big deal.
Well, also, you know, I think about the places where I might have frequented a food truck or not, and a couple of those places don't offer food in their establishment. So they invite the food truck, and I don't want to call anyone out because I don't want to get anyone in trouble, but they invite the food truck. Y'all know where it is.
You're their best advertisement.
Yeah, I probably am. And, you know, that's, you know, to create a community. And they do have some chairs outside specifically for that. And I've also seen the food trucks come to Preston Village, right? And they sit there in the parking lot, and people bring out the chairs. So it's also really hard to figure out, are those the chairs from the people that brought them to the pool, or is it the people from the food truck? So I just think we get into that really difficult implementation side of things, that just makes it hard. So I actually think a few chairs isn't gonna, a food truck is, from that perspective, is just not going to compete big time with the bricks and mortar if they have five, 10 chairs.
Okay, we have a motion.
He's looking at me like, huh?
We have a motion not to allow seating. We'll see if that passes, and if not, we'll entertain other motions. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Show your hands.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries four to three. No seating allowed. Construction sites.
Make a motion to approve Option 3.
Okay, there's a motion.
Second.
And a second discussion.
I didn't hear the motion.
Option 3.
Option 3.
All construction sites.
Thank you. Any other questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And just an editorial comment, there's a lovely film called Chef that is about a fellow who does a food truck, and I tell you, if you want to go just have a delightful evening, it's nothing but a big smile. So I highly recommend it.
So that's, that's a movie that's currently being?
Yes, it's playing at the Colony.
Before the movie, go to a food truck location.
All we ought to do is play it in downtown Cary at the little food truck.
Oh, I would think that would be brilliant.
While you're standing, while you're standing, eating your food.
Let me tell you, this is the, this is the most happy, you know, smile on your face film. You'll love it if you see it.
Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Swanstrom. Yes?
May I interrupt? We have to adopt the balance of the ordinance, too, the food truck ordinance. We just adopted the...
So you need a motion to approve?
Item A.
Item A for LDO round 28 with the amendments.
With the options, right.
Second.
Wait, hold.
Yeah, that was a motion, that wasn't a...
Let me, let me ask some clarification on what you're asking, Stu. We're still going through the options, we're not finished. We have slab-on-grade and technical minor.
Because she's just talking about option X.
But you're talking about just food trucks. Okay, very good.
I'd be happy to restate my motion, so it sounds less like a question. I move approval of Item A, LDO amendments, round 28, with the amendments as adopted.
Okay.
Second.
And the second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Simpson. We now move to slab-on-grade, and if you could pull that, is that 28, Slide 28? Oh, very good. Comments, or we just want to go through and tackle these?
I have a question.
Okay.
One of the things I noticed as we were looking at this again, I had this distinct memory that last time we saw this, staff had actually recommended parjing. So I went back and looked at the amendments as they were presented, and you had. So can you tell me what's changed, and why you changed your recommendation from allowing parjing to not?
I think that in, I think in, I know in one of the presentations in the, in one of the PowerPoint slides, there was actually an error. I don't know if you're talking about the slides, they're actually in the...
It's in the conversation.
No, I was looking at the minutes and the notes from the May 14th meeting, I think it was, when you brought these up originally. I'm just curious what had changed for you all to change your mind from a recommendation as he makes his way.
I believe the original recommendation involved parjing with use of shrubs for screening purposes, and based on feedback that we received from the council, we changed our recommendation.
So we were convincing to you.
Yes, we were listening.
I bet never happens. Okay, so it's not the, I just want to understand, because this is no parjing, and the original option was parjing with shrubs, so you're just saying, you recommend, the overall staff recommendation is no parjing. Overall, your second recommendation, if you were to narrow it down, would be that you would recommend Option 3B over 3A, should council want shrubbery?
That's correct.
I did get that, okay. All right, so you did change your mind.
I'd like to make a motion for Option 1.
Okay. There's a motion, is there a second? I'll second it just for discussion. We have a motion, second discussion.
Yeah. I mean, I'm sick of talking about parjing. I just, I don't really see where it does that much harm, especially on the sides and the rear of the building. I, I think staff recommendation, 3B is pretty reasonable, especially most folks are going to put a deck, or a patio, or something on the back of their home, you know? It's, I don't know if I've been in a house in a while that just had shrubs in the back with nothing else, but I just worry about, you know, some of the issues we may get into with no parjing, whether it's with the legislature, or legal, or whoever. I just, it concerns me, but I'm not going to lose any sleep on this one.
May I just say that, one, if House Bill 150 goes through, all of this stuff is out anyway. So they won't care whether we have parjing on three sides or four sides, it's all gone. Second part is, when you go out to Western Cary and you see all of the homes that are built on slabs, from the road, it's the rear of the houses that you see. Unless you go into the subdivision, you don't see the other three sides. The backside has some importance.
I don't disagree with that, but I think part of what we're seeing that we don't like is the architecture and/or the way the houses was built. You know, you see flat sides with just siding and a couple windows. I don't know that I've ever seen the back of the house and go, God, if they only had six inches of brick in the bottom, it'd be so beautiful. I just...
It's lipstick on a pig. I admit it. I have, I have an alternate motion I could make, which would be to ban slabs altogether, and then everything's built on a crawl space, and then we don't have some of that ugliness. But I'm not going to pursue it, just saying, that's what I would prefer to do. This is kind of like my compromise.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
The motion was for no parjing.
No parjing. All in favor of the motion for no parjing, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? No, motion fails, six to one. Counter motion?
Well, I'll make a motion that we actually go with planning and zoning board recommendation, Option 3A, with the parjing allowed on the rear and shrubs required.
There's a motion, is there a second? Okay, I'll second this.
No, 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 I'll withdraw my motion.
I'll withdraw mine.
I'm three for three.
Another motion.
Make a motion to approve Option 3B.
Second.
There's motion, second discussion.
I do have a question.
It's going to be the parjing discussion.
Yeah, we're saying shrubs not required, but we are looking for some, we're not just looking for a flat back of a house. I mean, is there anything we can do that says shrubs not required if they have constructed a deck, or a patio, or sunroom, or something?
Yeah, that was 3A, dude. Just joking, go ahead.
Please.
No, 3A, shrubs required.
I know.
But you're saying in lieu of shrubs, what else?
Right. If, you know, it just, I don't want to say shrubs not required, and then the builder goes, okay, I don't have to do anything, woo-hoo! You know? If they're putting on a deck, or a sunroom, or a patio, or a pool, or whatever, then shrubs not required. But if they don't build anything, then shrubs required.
That sounds like Option 3C.
We don't have a 3C.
We might get to that in a minute.
Well, you can...
I'm asking, can we? It's a question, it's not a...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I think in, in terms of the intent with looking at requiring the shrubs, that was, I believe that was always intended to be where, adjacent to the parjing, to cover the parjing.
Right, but if they have parjing, and then they've built a deck.
If there's a deck or some other structure that covers the parjing, then, then there wouldn't be that need, but... wouldn't be that need, but.
Just to add some clarification, the discussion here was whether to require shrubs across the entire rear as it relates to the parjing.
Right.
And 3B would be not requiring that. The Community Appearance Manual currently does have a foundation, a shrub foundation requirement, 25% of the shrubs are to be on the rear. So that's not to say that there wouldn't be any shrubs on the rear, it's just saying we wouldn't require one every five feet across the entire rear of the home.
I guess what I'm saying is, if somebody wanted to build a deck on the entire back length of their house, then they could not do shrubs.
Right.
Is that?
And in that case, with the current requirement that we have as far as the foundation shrubs, we wouldn't expect to see the shrubs in that case. We'd look for them to be put somewhere else around the foundation of the home.
Is there something that specifically says that?
It's in the Community Appearance Manual that we use.
Okay, so if they build a deck, sunroom, patio, whatever, and they physically can't put the shrubs on the found, next to the parjing, they don't have to?
Well, whether it's parjing or brick or whatever's on the rear.
Whatever.
Right, if they don't have room to put the shrubs on the back, and that, this is the requirement that gets the shrubs on the front of the homes as well, it's just 75% on the front, 25% on the rear. But if they don't have space because of deck or patio, then we work with them to put them somewhere else around the foundation of the home. That's a field adjustment that we make.
This is confusing, I just, okay, sorry, go ahead.
Ms. Robinson?
I created a visual. I'll make sure everybody understands what we're talking about. So on three sides, we're going to have a certain masonry requirement. On the last side, we are not having that requirement, correct?
On the rear.
If we don't have, if we have option one, then we're not having that requirement. And the backside could be just like three inches high, right? Because it's the slab, I mean, it's, it's not like they're having parjing that same distance up as we have the other masonry. Is that right, or wrong?
The 12 inches that's included in the rest of item C still would apply to all four sides.
But the floor, but that doesn't, that is in no way in relation to where the floor of the house is. Am I correct? Like, because it's a slab, you, slabs usually don't go much higher than, what, five, six inches? I mean, you wouldn't put a porch off of a slab, you would just put, I mean, you put a porch, you wouldn't put a deck. Right?
Usually, there are instances where there are decks that are built very close to the ground.
Okay.
Or the topography is such that it lends itself to a deck, right?
Yeah, as you look to grade a flat pad for slab, if you're adjusting for topography, the moment the slab ends, you begin to drop to recover the grade. And in that case, you could have a deck coming off of the rear of a slab.
Okay.
So, and your question about the finished grade of the slab is more of a builder decision as to how they want to design. There are other requirements, there are code requirements that kick in that need to be designed for. So the exact finished floor elevation may fluctuate depending on different builders and how they choose to meet the requirement.
Okay, all right.
We're talking inches, but.
Yeah, okay. I'm not a huge fan of doing the shrubs, because shrubs die. And people care more about the front yard, they work harder, keep the front yard, you know, the shrubs up, but the backyard is kind of like that private space where people are like, eh, I died, that's okay. So if we require them to put these shrubs in, and they, they die, I mean, I don't want staff having to go and check out, would you do that? Would you check out yards to see?
That's only a PRON CO, right?
That's correct.
Good, okay, all right, well, that makes me feel better, okay.
We don't follow up on the landscaping.
Okay, good. Because that would be kind of crazy.
On single-family lots.
Creepy, too.
Yeah.
Don, isn't your point, what you're trying to get to, is there, in lieu of shrubs and in lieu of a deck, a porch, a patio, whatever, that covers the parjing, what other options do we have so the parjing is not as obvious?
Well, if you cover it with a deck, a porch, or whatever.
Then it doesn't matter.
Then the landscaping should not be required. I don't want to force somebody to put 25% of bushes behind the house.
No, I hear you.
Where they can't really find a place to put them, but the ordinance says they have to put them.
Okay, so you're, so it's not about the appearance, it's about the logic?
What I was looking for was if they put on a deck, patio, pool, whatever, and it's not, the shrubs are not needed or physically cannot be put there, then they don't have to. But if they don't put on a deck or a patio and it's just the back of the house, then yes, they're required.
And Rob, was your point that the community design standards address that in another way?
There is a shrub requirement around the foundation of a home. Certain percentage go on the front, certain percentage are supposed to go in the back, the majority are on the front. That would still be in play. If you adopt three, make sure I've got these right, if you adopt 3B, where, no, if you adopt 3A, where the shrubs are required.
That one died, we're on 3B.
Right, yes, but, but we can, we would not require them where there's a deck, a patio, you can't plant a shrub in concrete, you can't plant a shrub in a rear stoop. So we're, the difference here is probably really not that large in terms of the amount of parjing that's left and visible after you have these other features on the rear of a home. And if the HVAC equipment happens to be on the rear of a home, we require screening around that, so there'd be shrubs around that inside the foundations. So there are some other items at play that, you know, could apply.
Are there different things with a higher priority? So for instance, I'm a little confused, how do we say at one point that shrubs are not required, but in the Community Appearance Manual, we say 25% of your shrubs have to be in the back? Is there a priority?
Well, this is a decision whether to require the shrubs if there's parjing, and have that as an extra layer on top of the Community Appearance Manual requirement that currently exists. It would be a higher standard if there's parjing, is what's suggested here.
So it would supersede?
Right, what is?
Yes, it would.
Which one would?
Right, which one super, exactly?
The one that requires the greater number of shrubs.
Okay.
Okay, that's what I'm going to, thank you.
Other questions?
So I just want to be clear, so 3B means that additional shrubs are not required beyond what's required in the community design standards?
Correct.
Is that right? Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's different than I, than you're reading, you read it, you read this and you think, oh, it's just going to be that great big long expensive parjing, and I was thinking, oh, there better be some shrubs there, which is what I read 3A as.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to pick option 3B. All in favor of this motion, please say aye, show your hands.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries five to two. And we need, we still need a motion to cover the entire on, slab on grade construction option or consideration.
I'll be happy to do that, Mayor. I move that we approve LDO amendments round 28, item C, with amendments incorporated.
Okay, there's a motion.
Second.
And a second. Discussion, all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries six to one. We have one more of these we need to discuss, that's technical minor amendments. Do you have a slide on that?
Yes.
And Mr. Yerha, while she's looking that up, do you have the particular one you're looking at?
Yeah, the particular one is one I mentioned the last time this came to us a few months ago, and I thought I'd be over it by now, but I'm not. And, and that's the elimination of gathering space in the conservation overlay. The next, yeah, it's the third one down there.
Okay.
I understand the, the reason for suggesting this, in a conservation subdivision, you're clustering the houses together to allow a lot of open space where it exists. So by, by definition, a conservation subdivision is going to have a lot of open space. Ideally, that open space, in my opinion, would be nice wooded areas that we could be saving some trees. I'm not sure that that open space is going to be gathering space, and that's where I have the, the issue. Gathering space is supposed to be somewhat centrally located and usable for residents, presumably for gathering. And I imagine in a lot of cases, we don't, wouldn't have a problem. And I would imagine this doesn't come up very often either. So I, I mean, taking all that in consideration, it's very minor, and I don't want to spending an hour on it tonight, but it just, I, I just think that there could be a situation where you have a bunch of houses, and then you have a bunch of wonderful trees, which is what we want around it, but we have no real gathering space if we, if we do this. That's why I bring.
Would you like to make a motion for the technical and minor amendments eliminating the elimination gathering space?
I'd be happy to do so, and make a motion for LDO round 28, item H, with the exception of the eliminating gathering space requirement in conservation subdivision.
There's a motion, is there a second? And a second, discussion.
Good catch, Mr. Ed.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Yerha. Did we get them all, or did we miss one?
I think that covers all of them.
Yay. Thank you, Ms. Beerman. That moves us to item 6.3, it's the STIT property north rezoning request. Staff's going to give us a report.
Oh, we have to do the comprehensive.
Whoops, I jumped too fast. Conference of Plan Consistency for Land Development Ordinance text amendment round 28, is there a motion?
I move to approve a statement of consistency and reasonableness based on council's decision on land develop ordinance text amendments round 28.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, we're at item 6.3. Staff's going to give us a report, we're going to hear it from the Planning and Zoning Board, and council may take action. Once again, Ms. Beerman.
Okay. This is a request to rezone about five acres on the north side of Green Hope School Road, about 2,000 feet west of NC-55 Highway. This is a vicinity map, you can see Green Hope School Road, the south side, also NC-55 and NC-540 is located to the west. This is an aerial view of the property, it is a wooded site. The existing zoning is residential 40. The proposed zoning is transitional residential conditional use. There are several zoning conditions proposed. The conditions would limit the land use to detached dwellings at a maximum density of 3.9 units per acre, and also allow neighborhood recreation use. There are traffic mitigations included that were part of a traffic, traffic study that are included. These include the, the lanes and striping at the entrance, and also a left turn lane on Green Hope School Road. This shows the southwest area plan, the site is in the, has a plan designation of MDR, medium density residential, with a density of three to eight units per acre. The proposed density is within this limit. There are some stream buffers, or a stream buffer shown on the property, according to Cary's GIS maps, field determination of this would be made during the time of the site plan review. Cary Parks and Greenways plan shows that there is an existing greenway along the western boundary of the site. This shows a notification map for properties notified at the public hearing. You'll note that the area notified is considerably larger than the, the site. The southern, the, the area shown on the south side is actually the subject of a separate rezoning request for this parcel that will be coming before you for decision at a later date. The public hearing for the STIT South rezoning was held on January 30. There was one protest petition received related to this parcel with a larger boundary. That protest was not valid in that it was received after the deadline, and also it was beyond the 100-foot boundary. In terms of citizen and council feedback, the protest petition that was received cited concerns with increased traffic, overcrowding, oversupply of housing, and decrease in property values. However, there were no speakers at the public hearing on this rezoning, and there were no comments at that time by council members. And with that, I will ask Mr. Swannstrom to present the Planning and Zoning Board's recommendation.
As you can see from the graphic, we voted eight to one to recommend approval of, of this request. In favor, we cited the fact that it is consistent with our land use plan, and it, it's actually at the lower end of, of the density for MDR. The concern that one of our members had really focused on two things. One, the lot size and transition of lot size to the neighborhood adjacent to the east and north. And then a more specific concern was traffic impact on Highway 55. The, I understand that the south turn on 55 is already at a failing, and so this was going to pile more F on top of an F. And I think that was our member's principal concern.
Thank you, Ms. Swannstrom.
This, that concludes staff's presentation, we're available for questions.
Okay, very good. Council members, questions, comments, motion?
Make a motion to approve 13 REZ 28.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, discussion.
I mean, you know, it complies with our land use plan, like Ms. Swannstrom said, it's at the low end of it. I don't know that I see a problem with the transition. They've addressing, you know, traffic with traffic mitigations, left turn lane. I find it to be a good use of the property.
I want to get back to P&amp;Z Board members' concern was the lot size transition. If I remember correctly, it was 5,000 square foot lots? Is that correct?
Actually, in going back and looking at the exact sizes of the adjacent lots, there are, the, the lots that are immediately adjacent to the north are about 9,000 and 12,000 square feet for the lots that are immediately adjacent, that are at the end of the cul-de-sac that comes through here, or the stub. The lots along this side are approximately 7,800 square feet. If you look farther to the north in this portion of Highcroft Village with the, the remainder of the subdivision, as you travel farther north, the lot sizes get smaller in, you know, a little farther to the north, they're six to 7,000 square feet, and then as you progress to the most northern part of the subdivision, they go to 5,000 to 6,000 square feet. So there is a progression where the lot sizes are larger along the southern perimeter of the adjacent development, and then they become smaller as you go to the north.
So the proposal has 5,000 square foot lots?
With the, the proposed development with the transitional residential district, the minimum lot size would be 5,000, the minimum lot size allowed would be 5,000 square feet in the proposed development.
The space between buildings was set at six feet, or something like that, if I remember correctly?
The combined setback for the both, for both side yards would be six feet.
Okay.
So 12 feet separation, each side has six?
No, the combined, there could be a zero lot line, but the combined setback of each side yard would be six feet.
Good thing we have good people in Cary.
Who like each other.
Who like each other.
Ask a question, Mayor. So we know the minimum lot size, do we, did I miss somewhere where, what the range of lot sizes are? Because as I look at this as transition, so if the minimum lot size is 5,000 square feet, and of course, I don't know how much bigger they might be, and then it goes 9,000, 12,000, goes up north, 7,800, goes up north, that doesn't sound like transition to me. That seems like a snake that swallowed a, swallowed something. It's skinny, big, skinny. You know, it just doesn't look right or sound right. What an analogy, right?
Other comments? Yes?
I'll just briefly say, we have pretty much no place for these kids to go to school nearby. We have an incredibly congested road, and the only people who talk about the congestion are the people who get to drive it every day. Most of us don't drive it and aren't really cognizant about how problematic it's becoming, and we have thousands of units going in to the west of this. I, I'm just trying to figure out what we're doing here. I mean, I, I want our community to be viable, and I want it to grow. On the flip side, I'm not sure we're pacing ourself in a good manner. It just concerns me, that's all.
Okay, other comments? I could tell you, I can't support 5,000 square foot lots in a medium density. To me, might as well do high density, because in a six feet separation, that's for me to Jennifer or less. And I just can't imagine that. Might as well be attached to me. So I'm gonna vote against it. Other comments?
Talking about a maximum of, what, 19 houses? Is that about what it divides into?
I believe so. With the, the, with the minimum lot size being 5,000 square feet and then the applicant did propose the maximum density of 3.9, but there were no zoning conditions offered related to any setbacks or lot sizes that would be larger than the minimum, although the, the density is smaller than, is lower than the, the density would be if all of the, you know, if the, you know, all of the lots were built to that size. So there is a density limit, however, the specific standards related to the development of the individual lots is the minimum that's allowed in the TR district.
Other comments? We have a motion to.
I don't, well, actually, I think I see.
Mr. Rowley.
Possible applicant.
Is there a question we need answered?
My personal opinion is that when an applicant is putting his business before us and we start expressing concerns, to me, it's only right to let him address those concerns.
That's all I needed. I just, if no one wanted to hear what he had to say, I'm not gonna bring him up here.
Yeah, no, I think it's the right thing to do.
Okay, very good.
Chris Rowley with Polte Homes. Just wanted to clarify a couple items that are being discussed, just to clarify the details. So I'm intimately familiar with the project that surrounds us. I'm developing that project right now. The lots that are adjacent to us are about 60 feet wide, maybe some are 65 feet wide. They're about 110 feet deep. So none of them are getting up to the lot sizes that we're talking about. These are more in a 6,500 to 7,000 square foot range and the average is coming out probably larger than what's expected. When you look at the map, you can see the second lot from the road looks like it's twice as big as all the others, which is skewing the data that you're getting because that's currently the sales center, which is, set up as two lots, but you have to keep them as one lot to start with because it's got the sales center plus the parking lot on it. So that's skewing the data that you're hearing. So lots are a lot smaller than what's surrounding you. That probably, I don't know if that makes you feel any better, but I just want you to recognize that what we're, what you're, where you're being told that these are 9,000 square foot lots around you, that's probably being suggested as an average.
That was at the north? I think that's what Ms. Beerman said. Go ahead, Ms. Beerman.
Correct. And in this case, we're talking about 19 lots that unlike a typical neighborhood where you're gonna have these back-to-back scenarios, these are all gonna be backing up to a perimeter buffer. So if you were to include those perimeter buffers back into the lot calculation, which I know we're not allowed to do, but if you did, these lot sizes would be much larger than what we're talking about. Had stat, or had the council previously given us the feedback that they want us to commit to larger lots, the lots that we're gonna build are gonna be larger than 5,000 square feet. That's just what the code allows. So we would've done that. Likewise, with the side setbacks, our side setbacks, the building code requires that side setbacks be at least five feet, which is not terribly larger than three, but once you get two five-foot setbacks, you're at 10 feet. Building code requires that before you have to put in a fire separation between single-family homes. So all of our homes are built with at least a five-foot separation, usually a minimum of five and a half, just in case something gets built wrong in the fields that you don't have a survey error. You know, and our neighbors around us, it's obviously a cemetery. It's the same builder that's proposing to build this neighborhood. If you go to the lots to the south of us at Highcroft Village, they're smaller than what we're proposing. So I think that we are very consistent with the surrounding uses. In addition, this is consistent with the plan that was just approved by this council for the land use change within the past couple of months.
May I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
I express concerns. You didn't really address what you would do. You just, it stated your preference. Your preference is still for us to vote for approval? Or would you rather us table it and you go rework this?
If, if, if changing the lot sizes, if we had heard that previously, we would have come in with those commitments tonight.
We can't request that of you. You have to offer it to us.
So I am offering up right now. We know that we're gonna do a minimum 6,000 square foot lot. We're willing to do that. I'm also willing to reduce the density back down to 3.6 per acre instead of the 3.9 because I think it was discussed that we were gonna do up to 19 units. We can only, there's only room for 16 units. This site is extremely constrained because you have a road to the north. Code requires that we connect to that road. We have a road to the south. Code requires you connect to that. Code requires that you put in a BMP. Code requires that you put in all the perimeter buffers. When it's all said and done, there's not a lot of property left and so because of that, we're willing to lower the density even further. So we'll go down to 3.6. We'll do a 6,000 square foot minimum. We'll do five-foot side yards.
Okay, other questions?
I have a question for our attorney. Are we allowed to accept conditions?
I would recommend against that, that we, in my opinion, tabled this and get that in writing.
Typically, you'll table it and get the conditions offered in writing.
Right, yes.
Is that all right with you?
Yes, ma'am.
You'd prefer that?
Absolutely.
So we have a motion on the table to approve.
I will go ahead and withdraw my motion.
Who is the second?
Ed.
Me.
Okay, do you withdraw?
Yes.
But I do wanna make a comment. I mean, when you, when you compare the lot under consideration to the lot immediately to the right with the road going through it, counting the real big sales lot, you've got basically the same number of property, about 17 lots. You know, if you divide that sales lot in half, you go up to eight, I mean, I see what's getting built very comparable to what's.
17 lots and how many acres, though? That's what.
I'm basically visually making this MDR box over on the right side.
Oh, I see you're transposing.
I could be off a lot or two, but I mean, you're basically talking the same thing side by side.
If I could make a clarification related to the lot sizes, just to clarify the information that I provided to you. In looking on Wake County's tax records, and I was just trying, because the, the question regarding the specific size of adjacent lots came up at the P&amp;Z board, I did take a, take a look at the lots, trying to look at the adjacent lots specifically and then in general with the bigger picture with how the lots transition to the smaller lots. The lots that you see here that are approximately the same size, all of those showed on the tax records, I believe it's 1.3, 0.13 acres translated to about, about 7,800 square feet. This lot was, the larger lot was closer to a half acre as that was a larger lot, I'm assuming, related to the model home. This called, there's two, if you extend this street down that has been built now, there is a 20-foot strip of open space within the development adjacent to that lot size. And where the road stubs down into this, there are two lots that are, one on this side was about 9,000 square feet. This one was about 12,000 square feet. The lot widths were comparable to the other lots, but because of the configuration, they were deeper lots so that they did have the larger area. So I just wanted to clarify where those numbers came from.
Okay.
I just had one other clarification. It's five-acre site, right? So my math says 3.6 units per acre is 18 and I think the applicant said 16. I just wanna see which is right.
But there's some buffer in there that can't.
In the road.
In the road.
No, but I'm just, is that, so it's 16?
All I heard was 6,000 and 3.6. I didn't hear it either.
I thought, I thought I heard, and I'm just asking for clarification.
If we're given the opportunity to come back with other conditions, it will be for 16 units. Keep in mind, the five acres is a rounded number, so the total acreage is actually less.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Rowley, while you're up there, I just have a question for you about our road network right here. Can you explain to us what Polte's doing to help with the traffic flow in this vicinity? Because I'm sure you guys are doing some improvements.
Absolutely. This project was small enough that it was not required to do a traffic study. We did include it in a traffic study that we were doing on the adjacent property. When the town's hired engineer made recommendations for this property to do improvements, even though we weren't required to, we volunteered to do all those improvements. So that would include all of the widening along on the frontage of this property plus paying all the, none of those improvements would be eligible for the transportation fees. So we'd also be paying out all the transportation fees required for this.
Okay.
So we don't have a motion on the table?
One quick question, sorry. This is a new development, so there'll be a CBU for, you knew I was gonna ask that. So.
That's a site plan issue.
I know it's a site plan issue, but I don't see any place, if we're just talking about a road, I don't see any place set aside except for in front, potentially in front of a house. Do we have any sort of plans for that? I mean, we're gonna have the same problem that we're perpetuating in other neighborhoods.
And can we even talk about that?
Didn't we just pass a land development ordinances pertaining to CBUs and all that?
But it didn't really speak to something where you, you know, location. I know it's a site plan issue and I just wanna bring it up. We're gonna have this problem over and over. Do we, and maybe I could bring it up afterwards or make it a pink slip item, but I can just see this being one of those issues that we see over and over where there's a CBU's gonna be, have to be in front of somebody's house because none of the other neighborhoods, none of the other streets, they all have mailboxes and this is not. They're not gonna have mailboxes. So we, we need to think about that and the, and hopefully the developer will think about that, maybe carving a little space as you come up with all the potential conditions that you might be bringing back to us. You can maybe think of as you're doing your site plan, putting the mailbox unit somewhere that's not in front of the homeowner's, potential new homeowner's home. Something to think about.
So we've heard from the applicant who has offered to make changes. Would we care to make a motion to?
I'll make a motion. I make a motion that, and I don't know the number, I apologize. Let's see, give me a second to get my number right. Okay, I make a motion that we table rezoning 13 REZ 28 as well as the comprehensive plan consistency to a subsequent meeting to give the developer an opportunity to reconsider his proposal.
There's a motion and a second. Ms. Simpson, do you see any issues with this?
No, that sounds fine.
Okay. Any other discussion? Ms. France?
I was just gonna say, I'm gonna vote against the motion to table it just because I, I find it to be like kind and quality to what's immediately adjacent to the, to the site.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed?
No.
Motion carries five to two. Thank you, Ms. Beerman. We now move to item 6.5. It's the community feedback for multi-way stop requests at Brook Green and Balmoral Drives. Ms. Cove will present this item. Council may take action. Ms. Cove.
Good evening again. This item is a follow-up from your June 12 meeting where you asked us to seek neighborhood input on proposed stop signs on Brook Green Drive at Balmoral Drive. We used the area of influence that we talked about at that meeting. That process to identify the households. We sent a letter to 269 households and received a lot of mail in response. Many people that actually responded wrote a lot of additional information on their letters, so we attached all those letters to your staff report so you could read them as well. In this map, you can see the area of influence outlined in red. The responses which we were, received are shown in green. They were very well geographically diverse and you can also see the locations of the data that we collected that I'll share with you in a moment. This is a very general summary of the feedback specifically related to the stop sign. 60% of the responses were not in favor. Please note that there was an error in the staff report, so the 60% is the correct number. 39% of the people were, were in favor of the multi-way stop and 1% had decided that neither one of those applied and they wanted an alternate solution. We did receive quite a lot of other suggestions and here's some of those. The first or the highest, most popular response, I guess, would be to remove the site obstruction at 1218 Balmoral Drive. The second was installing speed humps. The third was a request for additional speed enforcement. And more, installing a speed sentry under the speed limit sign. And those are the devices that are the digital outputs that show you the speed that you're traveling as you're driving down the road. Some discussion about limiting parking in the area of the intersection, sidewalks along all of Brook Green, some mirror installations, advanced blinking lights, and some advanced warning signs. Little bit more detail on some of those suggestions. This is a picture from the intersection of Balmoral looking south down Brook Green. As the speaker indicated earlier, a lot of this landscaping is actually planted on private property, not within the right of way. And on the, one of the other most common recommendations, speed humps, Brook Green is designated as a collector roadway and therefore not eligible for speed humps in accordance with our policy, but we just wanted to show you if we actually put them on there, there'd probably be a need for between 11 and 19 and would have a negative impact to the emergency response time. We did have some time to look at data. From a safety side, there's no reportable crashes in the last five years. We collected traffic volumes. Based on the unbalanced volumes that you see here, the location is not ideal for a multi-way stop location. That's basic, based on people's behavior. Typically, people that are on higher volume roadways, they get frustrated when they're stopping and there's not other cars on the side streets. So over time, they end up doing a rolling stop or not stopping at all at the stop sign. We also collected speed data on a few different days in a few different locations and we actually had some data back from 2007, so we shared that with you as well. The first column is the 85th percentile speed, which is an engineering term that's really the speed at which, at or which 85% of the reasonable driver tends to drive on a clear weather day with good visibility. That's typically the data that we use to set speed limits. Just in comparison with some similar roads in Kerry, there's typically, the speeds are between 25 and 30 miles an hour on collectors. As you saw in Brook Green, it's between 25 and 31. Again, some further comparison, on the higher side of speeds, when you look over 35 miles an hour, Brook Green's about typical for the number of people traveling over 35 miles per hour. And this one is also very difficult and staff is seeking council direction on next steps.
No easy ones tonight. All right, council members, questions, comments?
I just make some comments. First, thank you Lori and your staff for taking the time to look at this, collecting data, notifying all the residents. And really, I also wanna thank Ms. Adcock for encouraging the, seeking out citizen input because I think as we've all learned in this town, if you, if you ask your citizens a question, they will respond. And we like hearing those responses. It helps us make our decisions. I heard from a couple few folks who were very supportive of the stop sign, but I've also heard from quite a few folks a lot that were not. Some even took the time to call me on my phone, call me on my work phone, stop by my work. Kinda easy to find, I think. So I really appreciate everyone that took the time to reach out, contact me and all the rest of the council. And again, thank you so much to the staff. Based on the data, the information that I've received, I don't know that I'm supportive of moving forward with a stop sign at this time. However, I do still think that we have some concerns on this road. I've seen pictures of alcohol bottles lying on the side of the road, thrown in people's yards, and there are still the occasional issues with some speeders. So I would like to ask our, you know, police department to continue to pay attention to this, continue to, you know, look at speed enforcement type thing and just send a message that we're concerned and that we're not gonna tolerate speeding and/or bad behavior on this road. Because, you know, from some of the things I've seen, there are some genuine concerns, even though I guess they don't rise to the level of putting in a stop sign. You know, stop sign's not gonna cure people from throwing bottles and stuff in people's yards. So if we could continue with the speed enforcement, maybe the little speed sentry things that, you know, let people know we're paying attention, the occasional officer out there running radar, that kinda stuff, I'd appreciate that.
Other comments?
I would just say, to what Mr. France says, we have, we really have a lot of data to help us here and what it says is we don't know what to do. We know we have a problem. We don't know what to do and the data doesn't support a stop sign. And so I agree with Mr. France that it's extremely helpful to get feedback from the people who live there and drive this, this road a lot. And when, when you don't know what to do, don't do anything. Don't do any harm, is what I always say.
Anyone else? Ms. Smith?
Actually, it's a related question, not directly at this, but I recall many years ago, Mr. Bailey, if I can address this to Mr. Bailey? Don't look so excited. Did we not have an effort where we were trying to eliminate all four-way stops because they were, there was data that said they were actually less safe than some alternatives? Just refresh my memory because I'm not sure I got that right.
So we have a town policy that suggests not to use four-way stops for traffic calming purposes. We do recommend four-way stops if it meets some of that criteria Ms. Cove mentioned. You have equal volumes, you have a safety problem, you have other issues. And it's equal volumes at a fairly high threshold, not the very low numbers, too. When you start reaching the point where there's not a lot of gaps and there's other things, you may do it as an alternative to a traffic signal, for example. So we do have a policy that encourages that we do not do them, but it's just a policy, it's not an ordinance, so you have the flexibility to do what you like. And that's, and we as staff frequently refer to the standards for four-way. And that's, and we as staff frequently refer to the standards for four-way stops when we support them to be installed. But we do have some. We have one in Cornwall in, oh boy, I can't remember the other intersection that we've installed recently.
Near Maynard, I think off of Lake Pine and, you know.
Yeah, and that one's been there well before our policy.
Well below any threshold. I mean, it always surprises me that that one's still there. But again, I was just trying to get clarity of when it's appropriate to have a four-way stop and when not. So what you're, what you're reminding me now is that that discussion was around traffic calming.
Right as our traffic calming policy began in the late 90s, early 2000s, we also started talking about where and when multi-way stops were appropriate and we adopted our policy not to encourage them. We have done nothing to go back in time and look at anything. Those are difficult issues to deal with, so we have not gone back in time and unless directed by council, we would not do so.
Just for clarification, Jack, this would have been a three-way, not a four-way?
Right, right. I understand that, but what, I think the bigger point is that if the first reaction is always let's have a stop sign to solve the problem, I think as you said, Ms. Adcock, now we have data, we do have a problem. And I think we have to look at other ways to deal with that. And far be it me to say that we should put speed humps on collector rows, but we have done it once. I'll see. I don't know if I like that one.
I love that.
Boyd Seabrook liked the phrase.
That's exactly right.
Job well done.
You know, it has solved.
Well, and the other thing I just pointed out about speed humps is there has to be a 25% citizen, well, first there has to be, what, 70% of the impacted area has to.
What I was trying to get clarification on is the use of stop signs.
Yes, sir.
Other comments, questions? Seems like there's not interest in making a motion. If so, I would entertain one now. But there was direction given. You want to make that in form of a motion, direct staff to?
Do you need that in a form of a motion?
We don't. We'll put the police department.
Okay, so we gave direction to staff.
Continue to monitor the area, speed enforcement, traffic sentries, see if you can catch kids throwing beer bottles and stuff.
We'll keep doing that.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now move to item 6.6, consideration of artist selection process for downtown park. Staff's recommending that a council member, in addition to our council member, Jack Smith, who is currently serving as the liaison to public arts, to also be a member of the panel. And Mr. Collins will present the item, then council may take action. Mr. Collins.
Good evening, councilors. As you see in the staff report, it is now the time that we are ready to engage the artists for the downtown park. We've outlined in the staff report our typical procedure for selecting an artist or artists for projects such as this, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
And from individual conversations with council members, I hear everybody's excited about nominating Mr. France. Do we have a motion to do so?
Mr. Jack wants to do it.
I make a motion that we appoint Don France to that.
Let's all second.
Can we all second?
Second.
Discussion. Ms. France, anything to say?
No.
At least not now.
It's an honor being nominated. It's just an honor being nominated.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Collins.
And just for clarification, you also accept the rest of the process that we've outlined?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you, Jack.
We now move to rezoning item 14 REZ 18, amendments to the Alston Activity Center Plan, which was pulled from our consent agenda for additional discussion by council. Ms. Chandler's going to present this item and answer questions for us.
Thank you. I have a short presentation to refresh your memory if that is acceptable.
Yes.
Okay. This is a town-initiated rezoning request that was referred to us by some property owners in the area who are interested in adding single-family detached housing to the Petty Farm neighborhood in the Alston area. The subject property is located in the southeast corner of the Alston Regional Activity Center. As per the northwest area plan, the land use designation for the property is mixed use and the five refers to the Alston Activity Center Concept Plan. The base zoning for the subject property is office research development and it is also located within the mixed use overlay. There are no proposed changes to the base zoning, there are proposed amendments to the Alston plan. These changes include the Petty Farm neighborhood description, two items in the allowed uses and development limits section, and change to the design zone plan. The Alston area includes five neighborhoods and we're looking at the Petty Farm neighborhood. In the Alston plan, the current description is what's shown in front of you. There is a note in that description that due to the proximity of the freight rail line, single-family units are not currently planned. So that is different than what was brought to our attention. So the revised Petty Farm neighborhood description includes a note about non-residential and/or mixed-use development will both frame the neighborhood's main street and be located adjacent to Highway 55 and the future McCrimmon Parkway extension. Residential developments in Petty Farm will be conveniently located for work and play. The Alston plan also includes 15 traffic analysis zones. These boundaries were established by existing circulation routes and physical features like stream buffers. So in the Petty Farm neighborhood, we're looking at TASs 14 and 15. Each TAS has a maximum commercial square footage, a maximum office square footage, and a maximum amount of residential units that may be included. So with this package of amendments, it's proposed to add single-family detached housing as an allowed residential unit type for both 14 and 15. Also, something that's been added since the town council public hearing, we are proposing to add item seven to the notes that follow the allowed uses and development limits table. So that note would be in TAS 15, located in the neighborhood center design zone, and we'll see a picture of the neighborhood center area in a moment. At least 75% of that area will include mixed-use or non-residential development. And the housing types that could be incorporated into mixed-use would be live-work or multifamily over commercial, so that would be a vertical mixed-use element. The slide shows where the TASs are in relation to the design zone areas. And the shaded portion in TAS 15 shows what 75% or a little more could look like. That, that's the portion that would be required to be non-residential or mixed-use. Here's the current design zone plan as per the Alston ACCP. In the Petty Farm neighborhood, there is the town center design zone and the neighborhood center design zone. Both of these zones allow the same uses. The town center design zone requires a greater length of main street. The design zone plan is proposed to be changed to neighborhood center along 55 and the McCrimmon Parkway extension and neighborhood general along the railroad. And neighborhood general only allows townhomes and single-family detached homes. There was a protest petition filed at the beginning of this case and it is considered invalid because it is less than 20% of the subject property. At the town council public hearing, we had two people speak. Steve Bleach from Lennar Homes stated interest in developing single-family attached and detached housing. And one of the property owners along Petty Farm Road supported the addition of single-family housing and asked for consideration of a town center design zone or a main street area along McCrimmon Parkway. You all had some good comments at the public hearing. One, the first Petty Farm neighborhood description was ambiguous. The word "unique" was used in that, so that was taken out and that neighborhood description was revised to have some more descriptive language. It was noted that a compelling case is needed to change from office to residential. And it was also noted or questioned the viability of office space. School capacity was mentioned and it was also mentioned that rezoning has merit. Since town council, based on the questions, comments, and concerns expressed at that public hearing from you all and citizens, we changed the Petty Farm neighborhood description and allowed that seventh item that requires a minimum amount of non-residential development in TAS 15. At the planning and zoning board public hearing, we also had two people speak. Again, the Lennar Homes representative stated he believed that this package of amendments would encourage office development outside of the neighborhood general area. And property owner along Petty Farm Road voiced support and shared concerns about the financial feasibility of extending McCrimmon Parkway. The planning and zoning board had some questions. They asked if the existing business, Triangle Forest Products, would still be able to operate if this package passed. And staff responded yes, there'd be no changes there. And the board wanted to know the effects of the amendments on the total number of residential units in TASs 14 and 15. So this table shows, again, the maximum amount of residential units that would be allowed in TAS 14 and 15. The column that has NG at the top for neighborhood general shows what single-family attached and detached housing developed at four to five units per acre, what that range could look like. So that 200 is four units per acre and that 250 is five units per acre. And then the residential units in the NC or neighborhood center column show what allocation would be left for the neighborhood center area. So there's no requirement to develop residential in the neighborhood center area, so there could be no additional housing or there could be up to 220 units. There's also a question about why single-family detached housing was not originally allowed in Petty Farm. And staff responded to that during the charade that took place at the beginning of the Alston process. Citizens and property owners present at that believed that having single-family housing adjacent to the railroad would not be family-friendly or child-friendly and just didn't see that happening. But since then, since we've had the interest in the area and we also got some comments from the planning and zoning board that they didn't believe that was an issue, still thought that was an interesting question to bring forward. And I'll let Mr. Swansstrom talk about the planning and zoning board recommendation.
Meredith did a pretty good job summarizing our discussion. I'm not sure I could do better. Just, just on a high level, the first thing that struck us is this is a downzoning. We're going to decrease density. And in general, that felt pretty good. We don't see a lot of those. And so, you know, we started off with a little bit of a smile on our face with that. We realized that the original configuration of this plan had a, a main street that was intended to actually cross the railroad tracks. Well, we know that we're not going to be crossing the railroad tracks anytime soon, given the current dynamics of, of railroad. So that main street really ceased to make any sense at all. And the reconfiguration of the main street along 55 seems to be a good compromise. We did share some of the original citizen concerns about residential next to a freight quarter. I mean, you know, here at Town Hall, we know something about freight noise or train noise. But in general, you know, anybody that buys here is going to know that it's there and they're going to accept that, you know, that's part of the package. So let me see. We like the fact that it was expanding a residential option, in particular with, with lower density. And we believe that this option will actually potentially reduce impact on schools and roads, partially because of the product that Lennar is talking about, but more importantly, next, fewer housing units means fewer people likely to be going to schools or driving on our roads. And I think that summarizes our findings. And we did vote unanimously to recommend approval.
Thank you, Ms. Swansstrom. Ms. Chandler, anything else?
Just a reminder of the criteria for consideration for rezoning and council may take action on this request. And I'm available for any questions.
Very good. I'll open it up to council members for questions. I know Ms. Robinson has a lot to say about this one.
May not be questions. Maybe comments. All right. I'm not even sure how to start this conversation going because I have a bunch of different approaches in my mind. When I was a little girl growing up in Fairfax County, I'd get off of the Beltway at Little River Turnpike. And at the age of six or seven, I'd always pondered, I always pondered, why would somebody have built single-family homes right next to the Beltway and Little River Turnpike? And I was probably like six or seven years old when I was wondering that. And I've always wondered that, why would you take that land and put single-family homes there? Is that really the best use? So I started listening to what the applicant has been saying about why the council should feel compelled to take land that is presently zoned office, research, and development and turn it into residential. And what I'm hearing is actually one of the most powerful employs of salesmanship. And that is this, fear is more compelling than anticipation. In other words, you can move minds by making people afraid of what could happen rather than getting them excited about what is happening. And I really believe that is what has happened here in the case that is made by the applicant. And we heard the applicant's representative here tonight tell us that we should be afraid if we don't approve this, that we could get apartments. He knows we're not in love with adding more apartments to our community, so he puts that fear in us. The base zoning here is office, research, and development. There is an overlay, but that overlay actually could be removed or changed by this council if we didn't like multifamily to be a component for this land. So I should say, we should be moved or compelled by the anticipation of something good that could be done here for our community and for the economic development opportunities for our community, then we should be compelled to act out of fear of something that we're not really liking right now. I put a map on everybody's spot that shows how many parcels of land we have left in Cary that is presently zoned for O&amp;I or office, research, and development that is greater than 10 acres. We have 13 parcels, so far as I can tell. One of the parcels, half of it has already, and I actually counted as two parcels, because one of those parcels has already been rezoned by this council for townhomes. So we really have 12 left in this whole area, being, how many square miles are we now?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five, that's what I thought, 55 square miles. We have 13 parcels that we could put ORD or office and institutional. We talk about wanting to bring great companies to this community. The places for great communities, for great office buildings are at major intersections, intersections such as 55 and 540. These are the places that we should be preserving in anticipation of something great to come and not just saying, well, gosh, I don't want apartments and it could be really bad and let's go ahead and just approve these single-family homes because it would be better than that fear of having these apartments. We need to hold out. We need to have that 20-year vision for our community about what we want to have. And then we need to stick to our guns and pursue it. If we're afraid of apartments, we need to go back to our staff and tell our staff to change our land use plan, to take away that overlay or change the overlay. We shouldn't just go, oh, gosh, I guess there's nothing we can do. That's too bad, too bad we're the council and don't have any action, any capacity to take action. We, we need to save our land that is zoned office and institutional if we're serious about having opportunities to entice companies to come here. Otherwise, we're not going to have opportunities. And I can look at this map and I, I know enough about what's going on to know that at least one more parcel is going to be rezoned at some point from office and institutional to residential. That parcel itself is not in a major, at the crossroads of a major intersection. This, to me, is the most obvious location in Western Cary for office and institutional. And I just ask the council not to take action tonight. If you, if you, if you're not 100% swayed to protect our office and institutional, then at least don't take action to do something that's going to harm our future viability going forward. We don't have a lot of people protesting and talking about this because nobody really lives nearby. And that's the reality. We get dozens of people to talk about changing a road from four lanes to three lanes because they're all directly impacted. But what we can't But what we can't hear about when we have something like this is we can't hear from the hundreds, if not thousands, of people that will be impacted by this decision going forward. And so I just ask you guys to seriously consider this before we move on. I'm not afraid of apartments going there because I know that I could make a motion, if this, if this didn't go forward, to have the staff look at that overlay and change the overlay to be compliant with what we think is the right idea. I also know we're redoing the Imagine Cary. And so there's going to be some shifting of visions for what's going out in Western Cary. Just ask you to take, take some serious consideration before we jump on something as substantial as this. This is huge.
Comments, other comments?
No, I'll make a comment. First off, Ms. Robinson, I appreciate your passion. I mean, this is obviously, it's in your district, you have a lot of passion for this. And I, and I do appreciate you came with, you know, handouts. And I, and I love the fact that you did a lot of work to have evidence to support, you know, your, your passion. I don't think anyone on the council acts out of fear when they make a vote. So I disagree with you on that. Respectfully disagree with you.
I'm not saying that you guys are acting in fear. I'm saying their persuasion is, is one of fear.
Well, I'll just say, I only speak for myself. I'm not scared about apartments. We get apartments all the time and we've all turned them down a number of times. I actually like the plan from this perspective. I like the idea of putting the commercial towards Highway 55. And I have to say, when I was on P&amp;Z and this Northwest Area Plan came before us, we envisioned working with all the neighbors, a more urban feel, which is, is exactly the kind of product that Lennar is bringing. And again, we don't know exactly what they're going to build, but it becomes a more urban product. It becomes a more vertical, I hope. If this could be a North Hills, I think that is, in a lot of ways, what people were envisioning at that time. I also, you know, drove out today because I had been told, you know, the topography was unusual. And, and I did walk and nobody stopped me. And so a couple of people saw me. And there are some topographical challenges that make this not necessarily a good place for commercial, for, you know, the type of commercial and office buildings. We still have some great property left. We have that property that Lennar originally wanted across from Cary Town Center. That's a huge piece of property that's within the town of Cary. We have, it's not like this is the very last one. It is a good one and it's at a major intersection. But I, I think the exchange for the O&amp;I, a little bit just a hair south, is not a bad thing. And to be honest, for the whole idea for people to live, work and play, having, that's why RTP is changing the way it works, this whole property would be great as a live, work, play environment with office buildings similar to Inside Wade. So I happen to like the idea. Will they come if we, if they build it? Will they come and bring commercial? I hope they do, but there's nothing guaranteed. And I, I don't think it's, I guess I don't see it as the sky is falling, as, as you're portraying it. That's just my take.
Ms. Eckhart.
Great way to start here and there. Let me add a couple of things. First off, I, so in the seven years that I've been on this council, I've had, I have heard developers who said, you know, if you don't do this, you'll get a convenience store. If you don't, blah, blah, blah. That's not what I heard tonight. What I heard was this, that this rezoning eliminates apartments and gives us single-family homes and guarantees non-residential uses in TAS 15. That sounded really good to me. Ms. Bush's comments are on target about the reconfiguration of the space and what Mr. Swanstrom said about the, the centers, the main street that was going to have to cross the railroad that can't cross the railroad. And I'm sitting here the whole time thinking about how RTP now, after, what, 50 years, is now saying, oh, my gosh, we can't just make people drive in here to go to work. We need to let the people live here. So we're actually having the opportunity to get this, to learn from that and give the, some opportunities for people to live in, near where they work. I don't see this proposal as seeking to change the land use except to tweak the land use. I don't see us losing all the office potential. I mean, and I would ask, and I don't know if it's appropriate to ask, but I would ask if the applicant or whoever could tell us, so how many, just remind us, how many square feet of office could be built right now? And how many square feet of office has the potential to be built with this change? And I realize that the plan that they've shown, I guess, all of us, many of us, is a concept plan. It's not what would absolutely be built, it's what could be built. But as I look at, are we really losing huge amounts of office space? I would want to know what would we stand to build today, given, you know, how this reads now versus if we make this change. I think this, you know, and you mentioned Lennar's previous project, you know, that was a great idea in a bad place. And I think this is a really good idea in the right place.
So you're asking...
And I would ask if my question could be answered about the office space potential. And maybe you can...
Ms. Chandler, you have the answer to that question?
I have an example from the Alston Plan that shows the use type diagram that was done during the charrette that shows one way it could be developed. And I, I do know that John R. McAdams, the consultant working with Lennar, has done some studies of the property and would be able to answer the square footage of office space that could fit on the property. So if you'd like to hear both, I'll start with the illustrative diagram from the charrette. So I can see a little better. This is, again, one way the area could be developed. This is an idea that came out during the charrette. The brown buildings in the top of the Petty Farm neighborhood would be multifamily. The blue buildings are shown as office. The purplish color, the darker purple colored buildings are commercial, first floor, office, second floor. The more mustard yellow are townhomes. And then the brighter yellow are live-work units. So that was one vision, one way it could be developed that was shown during the charrette. And I know Bob Zmwalch from John R. McAdams is here. I'd like him to comment on office square footage.
But I don't want anybody to be misled that that is what would be, what would likely be built if you just want the base zoning, which is ORD. This is just one thing that could be done with the overlay.
Correct.
You still have ORD based zoning that could allow for taller office buildings, very similar to what we see in Mooresville, correct? That, that have their signs that you can see from 540.
That is right. You can develop, in the Alston area, you can develop with base zoning or with the overlay or even some combination. And the Alston Plan does have an allowance for, I believe, eight to nine-story buildings.
But my follow-up question to that would be, how's that, how does this proposal change that? It doesn't. If that's the overlay and the base zoning, this proposal doesn't change that, does it?
No, the base zoning remains the same.
Base zoning stays the same.
Yes.
But if you're developing houses, you're not developing it as the base zoning, obviously.
Right, but I...
Sure. The remainder of the property, again, could be developed with the base zoning or with the overlay.
Ms. Eckhart, did you get your questions answered?
No. I wanted, thank, but good, good start. Thanks, Meredith. What I was, what I'm trying to get a real handle on is how much office space do we have the potential to lose if we approve this proposal? It looks like Mr. Yurhama...
I did ask the applicant this question the other day and I...
Because I want to...
They're here and they have the exact numbers. I'm...
That's why I keep looking out there.
My understanding is, in the overlay, not the base zoning, but with the overlay, there's somewhere around 700,000 square feet now. And with this, we'd be at somewhere around 500,000.
Okay.
But that's round numbers and I...
It's no guarantee.
I don't want to be quoted, you know, if the applicant has, has different numbers.
And what's the base zoning? If it was built out under the base zoning?
You mean, how much office space would you have under base zoning?
Yeah.
Sure, it's how much you can fit on the property and if you're willing to do structured parking.
Okay. Do you know that number?
No, I'm saying it's whatever, it's whatever...
It's totally dependent on how the person decides to develop it, is what you're saying.
You can go as tall as, you can go with the building height and you can do more floor space if you're willing to do structured parking.
Does the applicant control the land for which he says they would then recommend the Office and Institutional being moved to?
Technically, the applicant is the town since his towning initiative, we're talking about Lennar Homes. They're looking at the Triangle Brick Property and the Nut Property and...
Do they, yeah, do they own the site and control the site where they're recommending that the Office and Institutional be moved to?
No.
And does the protest petition, the person who had the protest petition, does that land consist of the land where the Office is supposed to be moved to?
Let me pull up, wait. Oh, I don't know. Yes, part of that.
Yes, that's the answer. Yes.
And Jennifer, tell us what you mean by that. Don't just allude to it.
Okay. What I mean to say is, there is an applicant who owns land and says, I don't want to put Office here, so I'm going to move the Office to another location. And so, Town, you ought to be happy because I'm moving Office somewhere else. And the guy who's getting the, his land, the Office being moved projection, this idea that Office will come to his land, is kind of going like, I'm not happy with this. I don't like this idea. I don't like you guys moving this over to single-family and telling me that my land is now the Office land.
His land's already zoned Office.
His, his...
For the base zoning.
For the base zoning, but then he has the other uses for the other part. And he's saying, I don't, I'm not happy about this.
My concern... That's what I'm saying. Is it a change for TAS 15 with this, except, with this new recommendation? TAS 15 was already 75% Office and Institution. Isn't that correct?
Actually, let me get back to this one. So TAS 15 had 60, or has 60,000 square feet of commercial allowed and 400,000 square feet of office and 350 residential units. So Office is the major component.
Is that, I'm sorry, is that current or...
Yes, this is what is in the Alston Plan.
Current now, okay. This is current and proposed, so I was trying to figure that...
Yes, those allocations are consistent.
So the proposed is what's in red?
Yes, that's correct.
Right, so they can, I just want to make sure, they are only allowed in TAS 15 to have multifamily over commercial and commercial, or and O&amp;D, O&amp;I. Not, but, single-family detached is currently not applicable in TAS 15.
It is only in the Neighborhood General Design Zone. So the part that's orange is the Neighborhood General where single-family attached and detached housing could be allowed if the amendment package goes through. So you can see that's 20 acres of TAS 15. And 50 acres, rounded numbers, 50 acres remains in the Neighborhood Center for TAS 15. And that's the area that it's proposed to add the condition to require 75% of that 50 acres to be non-residential or mixed use. And if it is mixed use, it could include the vertical residential element.
What was the opposition of the person who protested it? What did he or she say?
They're concerned about having single-family homes adjacent to their business they didn't think would be very safe because of the type of business they are.
Okay. But that's if they stay.
If they stay.
Right, versus sell.
Yeah, I understand.
And is that protest petition still active or did they remove it?
It has not been removed. It was, it's considered invalid because it's less than 20% of the subject property.
Thank you.
Ms. Eckhart, did you get your question?
Yes, I did, and I thank you very much.
Other questions or comments?
I just want to make one comment, that the statement by the applicant saying that Inside Wade does not have a lot of students and therefore they don't project a lot of students here, I think it's apples and oranges. I think that the schools in Western Cary are in such high demand that people will live in Inside Wade, I mean, inside, this version of Inside Wade, whereas they may not have chosen to move to Inside Wade next to the PNC Arena.
Other comments, questions? If not, are we ready for a motion? Mr. Smith?
No, I just think we're all almost compelled to have, make some comments about it. I mean, the overlay, if I recall, we spent many years working with the community to create the overlay. And that's where I struggle. Look, when you look at this slide right now, you know, Jennifer, you're, you're, you're right on that in the old traditional days, having the large office buildings like the MetLife and so forth would be perfect for that kind of a major intersection. It would. It absolutely would. And the question is, there is a, you know, what I struggle with is the balance between the fairness to a lot of work put into a, a plan that was visionary at the time, for all the arguments that Lori, Lori made, you know, the live, work and play type of thing. And I, and I think we have an applicant in good faith that has heard our concerns, moved the stuff over. But the reality is, it's forcing the Office over on 55. And you could make, you know, from a, from a long-range plan, you could make a compelling argument that it would be nicer up there by the clover leaf. So, you know, it's like, you know, like some of the, like you said earlier, Mayor, nothing's been easy tonight. It's like, you hear one point and you say you're right, and you hear the other point and say, you're right. I think this, what I, what I go by is, I, you know, I feel like a lot of effort was made to push it so that the, that the Office is attractive where it is, even though it's on 55. It's the type of plan that we are looking for, that we envision to be part of the future, this live, work and play concept. But I, I think whatever we do tonight, we, we can't lose sight of Jennifer's concern about, I do think we have to, as either through the Imagine Cary and the visioning process, we are losing those home-run sites for the big stuff. And, you know, people want to come to Cary. You know, we're, we're on a roll with attracting large businesses and large corporations. So it's one of these things where, you know, I, I, I value the passion, I value the concern. At the same time, there's a lot of merit to what we've put a lot of years in for the vision and they just don't connect easily. And I think we just have to make a call, is, does this, does this meet some of our intent? And it's just like earlier when we were dealing with that small traffic problem. I think it's, it's really incumbent upon us that we, either through work sessions or whatever, through retreat planning, we have really got to look at how, you know, where we need Office. And if it's time to change those old plans throughout Town, you know, as part of a visioning process, maybe that, you know, we get into legal things about downzoning and upzoning and what you're allowed to do and all of that. But here we're kind of, here I think we have a chance for a good plan. But it does put some of our premium high-rise office concepts at risk. That's a true statement. But I think there's a, if I had to weigh the balance, I think this has a lot of, a lot of strong merit to it, particularly with the restrictions on the remaining property. If that made any sense. I mean, it's, it's a tough one.
Ms. France?
I mean, just some general comments. I'm not going to repeat much of what's been said, although I will say I think I agree with everybody.
Yeah.
I think everybody makes great comments. Ms. Robinson makes great comments.
Absolutely.
I mean, I, I can't help but feel torn on this one. I really do. I don't, you know, I typically tend to vote for things that are better than what can be built today. And you, you can call it fear, you can call it whatever. I call it reality, is that 770-some-odd apartment units can be built today. I don't know if there would be council oversight on that or anything, is yes or no?
With the, if someone came in with a multifamily development?
Yeah.
If it met all the standards in the Alston Plan, it's a staff-level review.
Staff.
So I hear where you're coming from, but it, but it's also a reality. I see this as a, you know, significant reduction in density with probably an increase in quality. I mean, I think we've all been to the Inside Wade development at this point. I think we all pretty much like what we see. I think some of us just don't want to see it here. It's a tough one. I, I totally get the concerns with the Office, but I don't think we're eliminating the Office. I think we're just moving it a little further away from 540, which, looking at the picture, they got to get off on 55 anyway, so why not put the Office on 55? I mean, I, I don't know. It's, I, I understand the schools' argument from our standpoint. I don't get it from the school system's standpoint. I was talking with somebody today and we were just playing with numbers. Town of Cary's got about 150-some-odd thousand people. Town of Cary has got about 150-some-odd thousand people, and our budget was $261 million for this year. Wake County Public Schools has 120,000 students in a $1.4 billion budget, and yet we can't get schools out here. So I understand that we share some responsibility in this, but I, the school's argument really irritates me because I think we're bearing some of the blame for school systems. I don't want to say the words I want to say.
Situation.
Yeah.
There you go.
Bad planning, whatever you want to call it.
Situation.
But those, those concerns are real. But it's a real concern that if we got apartments or if we got multifamily of some type today. So it does commit a majority of this site to non-residential uses. I think when you look at the entire area holistically, given a lot of the commercial and retail coming in up to the north and such, I, you know, I think, I think some office will come. And I think we do still have some sites throughout town that are very conducive to very high-quality, top-shelf office development. I just, it's got pros and cons, but I'm, at the end of the day, it's one of those Jack Smith 5149s, you know, was it? So I'm kind of leaning on my 51 to support its side.
Mr. Yerha?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. No, I mean, I don't want to be repetitive. We've really covered this fairly well, I think. I just look at the facts, and again, that might be oversimplifying it, but we're going from 700 to 800 dwelling units, and if this plan comes to fruition, down to in the 400 range. I mean, it, by allowing single-family as a, as a use here, that's really what we're doing. We're adding single-family. Frankly, I think if I, my brothers, I'd have had single-family allowed as a use to start with, I think, years ago with this plan. So I don't object to that. And I think we're decreasing the density, and we're ensuring that we have some office space here. Right now, we have no assurance that we have any. Would we probably get some? Yeah. Would we probably get apartments too? Yeah. I don't know what we'd get, but we have no guarantee right now that we would have any office. This at least guarantees 400 to 500,000 square feet, I think, of office. So it's a reduction in intensity. I think we may have gone a tad overboard when we approved the overlay in terms of density and intensity years ago. I think this is more in line with my thinking, my concept of what I'd like to see up there, and apparently in line with Planning and Zoning Board's unanimous recommendation. We don't want to forget that. Again, by approving this amendment, there's no guarantee we're going to get an Inside Wade. I mean, that's not...
That's right.
Part of this, so we've got to realize that. If we did, I'd be real happy with it. But we, I, we need to keep in mind what we're doing, and we're allowing single-family as a use here, and with the new condition that was, that was added, guaranteeing X number of, I don't know if it was put as square footage or acres, but as office, which was not there the first time we saw it, and I'm pleased with it.
Ms. Robinson?
Just make a couple of final points. In residential real estate, being close to a highway is not appealing. In residential real estate, it's also not appealing to be next to a railroad track. In commercial real estate, it's very appealing to be next to a highway. Companies would like to have their sign shown over the highway so that people passing by on 540 can look up and see their company's name. The basic principles of what is good next to a highway seem to be, have forgotten in this conversation. It's not ideal to put residential next to a highway. People don't like to hear the highway in their backyard. Kids don't like, parents don't like the fear of having their kids playing near a railroad track. That's just a reality. Those factors are not negatives for an office development. I think we're approving something that is not good for our community. And I, I just think we need to be very careful here before we move forward. There are places for Inside Wade. I don't think it's here.
Ms. Sack?
Two words, Preston Grand. Beautiful, very high-end neighborhood built right by the railroad tracks, let me just say. You know, one where you and I wouldn't want to live, somebody else does. And I think it's time to put us out of our misery. I think we need to vote this up or down, and if it does pass and somebody wants to move to table, they can do that. But I think we're all just trying to avoid the inevitable, so I am going to move approval of rezoning 14REZ-18.
Here's the motion.
A second.
And a second. I'm the only one that hasn't weighed in, so I think I'm due. And basically, if I could literally echo Don Francis' comments and his angst, I would. His feeling, how much he's struggled. I can tell you, I've changed my mind half a dozen times in the last couple of days. I cannot. It's 5149. I am struggling with this. And I, if I fear anything, I fear the loss of office. I really fear that. But I'm going to reluctantly go along with this. I fear it. I struggle with it. Don, I feel, I feel like you described it. I mean, it's really, really hard, and I think I've done this like 11 years, 10 years, something like that. And this has got to be one of the top three tuppies for me, so, anyway, so I'll weigh in.
Mayor, before you vote, can I just remind council that Inside Wade and other developments are not a condition of this reserving?
I do have one question.
Yes.
I didn't hear the motion.
Well, bless your heart, honey. I said, "I move approval of rezoning 14REZ-18."
Thank you.
And we got a second, right?
Ms. Bush seconded it.
Okay, thank you.
And the only other thing I would add is, the town is the applicant. I think earlier, Mr. Smith or someone may have said, "The applicant's done this or that," but the town is the applicant in this case, right? Am I not right?
That's correct.
Okay. Just good to know.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Never.
Motion carries six to one. We need a motion for the comprehensive...
Move approval of the comprehensive plan consistency for rezoning 14REZ-18.
There's a motion.
A second.
And a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries six to one. Time to go to closed session. Would someone read a motion?
Yep. Pursuant to GS 143 31811A, one and three, I move that we hold a closed session to consult with attorneys employed by and or retained by the town in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorneys and the town. Among other things, the council expects to receive advice concerning the following lawsuit, S.J. Lewis Construction, Inc. versus the Town of Cary, and to prevent the disclosure of information that is made privileged or confidential by GS 143 31810E.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We are in closed session.
I know you said it.[1349.92]